They'll take a motion to reopen our meeting.
I move to reopen the closed session of the committee of the whole.
Did you say second?
I did say second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of reopening the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. And with that, I will adjourn the committee of the whole. And at this time, I will call the regular meeting of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for February 5th, 2025 to order. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Elper.
Present.
Commissioner Forni, absent. Commissioner Menns.
Here.
Commissioner Olson, absent. Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Vice President Musich.
Present.
President Abene.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And Commissioner Forni will not be joining us tonight. A note about the agenda for tonight. I'm moving reports of officers up in the agenda like we did at our January 7th meeting. And with that, the agendas before us may have a motion to approve the agenda. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. One set of minutes, would somebody please read the date and move the minutes?
I'll move the regular meeting minutes of January 15th, 2025.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. And with that, we will turn to our superintendent Bangora for his report on the report of officers.
Thank you, President Abene and commissioners. As for folks that don't know, these reports are based on our strategic directions that the board has approved for four years of their work and their time here. And we reflect that to show the work that we are meeting, the board's agenda and what they're asking for and their ambitions and goals. And so a lot of these are reflective of, of course, those goals that we have in front of us. So I'll begin with strategic direction A, act boldly for our climate future. And this is the winter contract and natural resources work in our organization. Natural Resources is conducting two contracted projects this winter to remove invasive species and restore habitat. Approximately 18 acres of buckthorn is being cleared from the woodland on the northeast side of Cedar Lake. This buckthorn is being removed rapidly, primarily using a forestry mower. The change in the area is immediately noticeable, dramatic, and potentially startling to those used to seeing the woodlands overrun by buckthorn. This removal is necessary first step in restoring this space to a healthy ecosystem. At Loring Pond, dormant invasive cattails are being cut in the South Bay as a step in their control. Cutting at this time of year helps to prevent gas exchange and sets back spring regrowth. The cut debris piles will be burned on site to dispose of the material. For both projects, control when plants are dormant in the winter is effective in controlling the targeted invasive plants while also minimizing impact to desirable native plants. Strategic direction B, cultivate each community's place and honor cultural traditions in Minneapolis Parks. The Martin Luther King, Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. event and kite festival. MLK event, emceed by Tim Dumas, who was brilliant, featured the following. Lyrical dance interpretation, music from the group None Above, which if you hadn't had a chance to see this group, they're absolutely amazing. They're really the new Minneapolis sound and they're all brothers and sisters, incredible. Keynote addresses from Dr. Betty Joel Webb, Living the Dream Award presented to Derek L. Robinson, who was a former NFL player and does an amazing, amazing camps over at McCray Park for many, many years and wonderful man and wonderful family. And roughly 150 people attended. And there was a food drive benefiting Youth Link and Avenues for Youth in Minneapolis. I always encourage folks, if you haven't had a chance to attend this event, please come by. It's a wonderful event and to celebrate community and the folks that volunteer and give themselves every single year. It's really amazing. And thank you for the commissioners who was there. I know President Abene, of course, and Commissioner Forni. Who else was there? I can't remember. That was the two, I think. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. The MRP, the Minneapolis Park Commission Board kite festival, a very successful collaboration with the Art Shanty Project to have a combined 12,000 during the kite festival, featuring five food trucks, a kids DJ, an interactive art station provided by the Minneapolis Institute of Art, wonderful partners, and nature hikes in the Roberts Bird Sanctuary. We partnered with the East Area Neighborhood Association and the Linden Hills Neighborhood Council to provide schmores, stations, and kites for kids. At least one successful marriage proposal happened during the event. So that's what we do in our parks. Lot of history. Yeah. Okay. Strategic direction C, implement quality youth and intergenerational programs. Fire and ice. I had the absolute privilege of being there in this. And McCray Park hosted their annual fire and ice event on Friday, January 17th. The beautiful winter night was filled with activities that included a fire show, ice skating, schmores, very popular thing, by the way, in Minnesota here, face painting, and more. A bonus at the event included a brand-new photo display of the history of McCray Park. This year's event was extra special as hundreds from the community celebrated the recreation center's reopening after six months' closure for accessibility improvements, which included new restrooms, flooring, updated appliances, and more. Updates were part of the 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan, or as we call it, MPP 20. In the third photo there, you'll see myself, but of course, we missed President Abene, who was behind somebody there. But we were there and it was a wonderful, wonderful event. And that park being redone, it was really amazing to see. So thank you to Rachel Holman and her staff. It was really fun, really fun. And it was a cold night, by the way, and that person in the fire, she was amazing, but she was cold, I'm sure, too. So strategic direction D, care for our park assets to meet evolving needs and practices. Ice rink prep at Northeast. Northeast maintenance staff, paint lines on the ice for broom ball and hockey programming. Because of optimal ice-making temperatures this season, we've had great, great-looking ice. Staff are always excited to paint the lines on their rinks. These markings really make the ice pop visually. It also allows the users to have fun and fair play. Our neighborhood residents and park users absolutely enjoy this every single year that we do this. This process takes the right temp and must be performed with care and safety in mind. When installing these markings, it is critical not to put down too much paint. Excessive paint and sun will lead to the ice being burnt, outcausing an unusable service. Staff must move quickly. This is easier said than done when working on ice. Also, the lines must have thick layers of water put on top to ensure they don't get skated over, which requires installation of very cold temperatures. The other trick is putting water on fresh paint and not wash the paint away at the same time. And I know this sounds maybe a little bit too much, but it really is technical and a lot of work that goes into this. It's really incredible. The skill that our staff have over the years, understanding how this works, is really amazing. I've sat and watched for like an hour sometimes when these folks do this work, and it's really impressive and very grateful for our team and the work that they do. Strategic direction E, steward our natural resources. Forestry update. Forestry crews are still busy with removals and pruning this winter. In the South District, the crew in particular completed a very large and extensive removal. The tree, 50-plus inch diameter American elm tree, was located in an easement on Minnehaw Avenue. Sadly, this magnificent elm became infected with Dutch elm disease, or DED, and needed to be removed before it became hazardous. Due to the location and size of the tree, the streetlight needed to be removed, a portion of the street needed to be closed, a bus line needed to be rerouted, and a homeowner needed to be notified. Crews are used to notifying homeowners and blocking off work areas, but preemptively removing the streetlight and rerouting the bus are not typically part of a forestry crew's work. The crew leader for this removal, Kevin Clay, took the time and effort to ensure the removal of this large tree was done properly and safely. He worked with Metro Transit to change the affected bus route temporarily and with the city traffic to temporarily remove the streetlight and close the affected street block. He worked out a plan with the homeowner and communicated this process and any changes effectively. Given that this tree was immediately adjacent to any, to other trees, as well as a house, Kevin needed to choose the appropriate method and equipment for the removal. A GRCS rigging system was used to pull cut limbs above other objects. A bucket truck was used to access the branches for cutting. And an Avant articulated loader was used to help move brush and clean up debris. In addition to Kevin, who did the cutting and the bucket truck, Rob Raymond managed the GRCS rigging system. Brian Williams ran the Avant. Frank Jackowicz worked as traffic control. Mark Call drove the log loader. And Dave Den drove the bucket truck. Phew, a lot of work to do this. I tell you, to move one tree, right? Incredibly talented staff. Everyone helped with cleanup. The single job was a full day's work and the preparation involved started months earlier. And I'd just like to say, well done to Kevin and his crew for taking the care and effort to ensure safe, successful removal. And I appreciate being able to articulate this because it is complicated work. It's really tough work and they did an amazing job. So thank you to our forestry crew. Last thing, our federal legislative agenda. I've received questions about how changes at the federal level may be impacting the parks. Later, of course, in this meeting, we have considerations of the state and federal legislative agendas. Staff, of course, will provide a brief update, what we are watching and tracking at that time. And the last thing, I have the pleasure of introducing Megan Cosgrove, the new executive director of the Lopet. She's right back here. Come on up, Megan. She joined the Lopet in late November. She has 20-plus years with Y of the North, serving overnight camp programs, including executive director of the Camp Warren and Camp, ooh, Meno... Menoogen, thank you very much. Spent time as an educator and canoe guide. And she moved to the Bryn Mar neighborhood in 2011 to be closer to Theater Worth Regional Park. And I'm sure, what, 15, 14 years earlier, you knew you were going to be in this job. That's why you went there. So really great to meet with you. We met at the legislative breakfast and welcome. And I want to just, you know, say a few words, turn it over to you, and congratulations on the job. Really excited about working with you.
Thank you. Likewise. Thank you for inviting me here today, commissioners and superintendent. I just want to share my excitement for strengthening and continuing the partnership that we have. And I hope to invite all of you to the Luminary Lopet on Saturday night, Lake of the Isles, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then, of course, we had the City of Lakes Winter Festival, which was Saturday, February 1st, and Sunday, February 2nd. The Lopet held 19 events between those two days. And they hosted nearly 1,700 participants. And of course, as Megan was just talking about, we do have, of course, the amazing Luminary Lopet. And again, congratulations, and I'm really excited to work with you and it's going to be great work with you. So President Forni and commissioners, that's all I have. Any questions?
It's President Abene. It's President Abene.
Did I say Forni again?
That's okay. I'll just change my name to President Forni.
So sorry. That's two now.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Is, are there any questions or comments for the, okay, Commissioner Menns?
I had a question. So Superintendent Bangora, thanks for that report. That was really great. I love seeing all the things that are happening around the park. I missed the kite festival this year. That's a great event. For the tree removal, so that was all of our forestry crew. So we didn't contract out to other foresters for that work?
President, Commissioner Menns, yes, that's correct. That was our forestry team.
That's really complicated and amazing work of tree removal. And I think that that's a real testament to what our forestry staff can do. And as we further discuss these EAB issues, I just wonder why we don't take care of the public health initiative internally since we're identifying it. We have the trained professionals to do it. So it just kind of raised my ideas of if we have the staff to do it, why can't we?
Thank you for those comments. Are there any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, seeing none. With that, I'd like to remove, move to reports of appointees to outside boards, commissions, or committees. Does anybody have a report to make? Nobody? Okay. Not yet. Thank you. Okay. So we have a little bit of time till we go to open time. So we have our consent agenda before us. May I have either a motion to remove it as a slate or are there any, is there anything that anybody is seeking to pull? Commissioner Menns?
I would like to pull, sorry, I lost the number.
Take your time, there's a lot of these.
2025-1-14, please.
So, dash 14?
Yep.
I want to mark it myself, too, so. Any other, any other items to pull here?
I'll move the remainder of the consent agenda as a slate.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Commissioner Menns, would you like to move this for discussion?
I'll move 2024, I lost it again. Dash 2025-14, resolution approving the concept design for Audubon Park Playground and site improvements without a public hearing.
Somebody second that? Second. Commissioner Menns?
Yeah, the reason I'm pulling this is, first of all, because I think it's important to highlight the work that our planning department does around this. I think Bianca, who was the person who was working on this concept design and the engagement, did an excellent job of modifying and putting into place the priorities that the community has. I think it's an amazing piece of work. I also was looking, and I'm trying to delve more deeply into these plans that are in our, in our districts, because I think this is a place where we, as commissioners, could and should have a little bit more impact on what's happening with those MPP plans. Especially as we get further and further away from the CAC design, there are going to be reasons and necessities to amend these plans in a timely and efficient way. So I'm asking this because I had talked with Assistant Superintendent Schroeder this week around this park. And in this park, there is a dog park planned. And there could be a dog park planted almost every park. There's always a need. And I'm struggling and still struggling to figure out where the places are to find efficiencies for my district and utilize the taxpayer money effectively to get as many amenities in the parks as we can. So I'm sorry if this is going to take a second, but I'd like to know the process for amending master plans regarding an amenity. So the dog park at Audubon Park is not, is kind of a nonstarter. The community really doesn't want it. It was put there in the corner. It's the location that's closest to the current dog park in my neighborhood. There is another dog park in Beltrami Park planned. And then there's a space where there could be one in Northeast Park, where there's a tennis center currently planned for. I was working with Ms. Superintendent Schroeder on how we could redirect a little bit of money from the Audubon plan to provide an amenity for the community at large. And I think, I'm wondering, and Superintendent Schroeder, I was wondering if you could just explain the process of amending the master plans or what would be necessary to do this? And it seemed really excessive for redirecting maybe $25,000 to try and test start something else in a different park, and we just can't do it. And I think that we could, if we had different process or easier amendment strategy for district commissioners.
Thank you.
President Abene and Commissioner Menns, the process we would use would be typical of the process we'd use for any master plan. We would prepare a community engagement assessment and plan and present that and share that with the board through a petition communication, then embark on a process of engaging the community. If I understand the request we've talked about, it's fairly narrowly focused. For us to try and fit it in now, we were short on staff, but it would be difficult for us to do it now. But in total, we probably allow ourselves three or four months to move through that process. And through that process, we, and as you, as you and I have talked about, we would be amending three different master plans. The two that would come out and the one that will go into. And that process for amending the master plan is summarized in each one of our district master plans. So it's, and then we, of course, go through the process of engaging the community, developing a plan, bring it back to the planning committee, and then back to the full board. And while it seems like a lot of steps, it is the transparent process that we have used in all of our planning processes. If you wanted a shorter process, the board of commissioners can do whatever you want. You could direct us to just directly change it without doing community engagement. That's the prerogative of the board or commissioner who might be able to gather enough votes to be able to do that.
Thank you for that. I'll call on Commissioner Menns again.
Thank you for sharing that. I just wanted the board to hear the same response because I think that it is something that this board and future boards should really look at, that we have made these plans, these master plans, that were very timely and worked through, and it was a reflection of part of the community. We, as district commissioners, have been elected to be the most important community engagement, in my opinion. We are voted on, we are elected. And making this change is so complicated and difficult that it's hard for us to do our jobs to create efficiencies within our districts. So I would like the board to just, you know, stew on that a little bit. And this is just an example where the commission, because we're having this without a public hearing, and we would have to change three master plans for something that I personally, as district commissioner, know would be an efficiency for my district. Why do I not have the ability to do that? Or how do I do that with you all? Or how does other people do that with them? Because it is five or six years out from that CAC, and those plans get less and less timely for the current residents of the district or the, what has happened with the total area that it's planned for. So just trying to raise that idea with the board.
Commissioner Musich. Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Abene. Could the district commissioner help me understand, are you asking us to vote this down tonight? Is that what you're asking for? Because I'm unclear what you all, everything you just said had to do with the item before us tonight. Are you asking us to vote it down?
No, I am not asking you to vote this down. I am asking you to understand that there might be a subsequent action that comes before you that's related to where we could amend this, but the complications are so intense for staff or for the process of amending multiple master plans with a simple fix. I think that, I'm just asking you to consider, you can vote for this plan for sure, I'm going to vote for it. But what I'm saying is that we need to have these discussions as a board because we're not creating efficiencies for the taxpayers to get what the taxpayers deserve in their parks with the money that we are bestowed upon.
Okay, so I think we are a little off topic.
Could I, could I finish my time?
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
Thank you. So I would suggest that you talk to the planning chair about the desire to have a discussion item around the community engagement process that we've adopted as a board. I would have ruled you out of order for this topic because it's not relevant to the item that we're discussing tonight. But that is the path forward for us to have a conversation as, as you've been, I think, communicating you'd like to have.
I think we should move on, but point taken. So is there other discussion related to this resolution?
I'd like to respond to that really quickly.
Ah, no.
Okay. So next time, I should make an amendment to the, to the agenda?
Perhaps.
Okay.
I think so. Okay, so that being, that being, it looks like there's no other discussion. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-14, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That resolution passes, and I think we're in good timing here for open time. So I'll read the open time rules. Thank you to those of you who have come to speak during tonight's open time. The board's open time rules are as follows. I will call on people from the speaker list only. Names are added to the speaker list by calling in before 3:00 p.m. Names are added to the speaker list by calling in before 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting or by adding it in person at the Board meeting before 5:30 PM. The time allotted for all speakers shall not exceed fifteen minutes. We have, it looks like twelve speakers, so I will give each speaker, I'll do one and a half minutes. You may not transfer time to somebody else, and you should watch the timer and stay within your allotted time. This is an opportunity for you to address the Board. That's really important. We're listening, but we will not respond. That said, please don't hesitate to contact any of the commissioners for dialogue and further discussion. To protect the privacy of individuals, please refrain from commenting on specific personnel issues or pending litigation. Discriminatory or harassing words directed at anyone will not be tolerated. Each speaker is asked to state their name and their address or where they live. So with that, I will begin to call from the list, and again, about a minute and a half. So we have Councilmember Latricia Vitale here to speak, and then former Councilmember, President or Council President Barb Johnson. Welcome, Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you very much, President of Bennett. And congratulations to you and Commissioner, Vice President Musich, on your newly elected leadership positions. I just wanted to check in quickly, because I attended the January fourteenth meeting that Hennepin County held about the BLE project. It was at the library in North Minneapolis, and it was well-attended. I wanted to just talk about some concerns I had. When the council gave municipal consent, we added conditions regarding the Lowry Station's design and the BLE's impact on parkland, particularly how it interacts with the Grand Round system at Theoworth Parkway and Victory Memorial Drive. The approval clearly stated that the BLE should not cross the Grand Round's Parkway at grade. However, Option A, which was presented as the one approved by the City of Minneapolis, has the BLE crossing at grade at Theoworth Parkway, which goes against the council's resolution. When you look at all the options, the best options you see is Option H. It would meet all the requirements of the city's municipal approval, because the blue line would not cross the Grand Rounds at grade, and it would also do the least damage to the Victory Memorial Parkway. I want to make it clear that a design that crosses the Grand Rounds is a nonstarter, for me and majority of my constituents. Because the blue line, the idea, oh, sorry. That was the quickest minute and a half of my life. Thank you. I'll submit my comment.
Thank you so much. Barb Johnson, followed by Alexandra Cato, please. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and Commissioners, I really appreciate the ability to speak to you about this, again. I also attended that open house at North Regional Library, and it was a very well-attended and successful opportunity, I think. You know, I worked on this, this line, that blue line, for about twenty years, serving on Citizens Committee. And also observed and voted on the Southwest Line when municipal consent was required for that, when I was on the City Council. I continue to be concerned about the possibility of the at-grade. And I just want to really say that it's, it is a nonstarter, as Councilmember Vitale said, for people in North Minneapolis to have their access to the Grand Rounds require an at-grade crossing. It is unsafe, and it is a real detriment to our community. I'm happy to see that Option H provides an opportunity that does not cross that grade, and I think that we need to follow that, follow that up. But I also would point out that it also, Option H, when I looked at it, I have some concerns about access to North Memorial Hospital. And so that's something that needs to be worked out, because people in North Minneapolis and the adjacent suburbs really use that Victory Memorial Drive, Theoworth Parkway as a way to get into the hospital for emergency services and for, you know, regular visiting, all that sort of thing. So thank you very much. Hope you consider some of these changes. And I think, thank the staff and the staff of the Met Council for working on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra Cato, followed by Quang Nguyen.
Hello, I am a resident of Northeast Minneapolis. My name is Alexandra Cato. I live at six four six Polk Street, Northeast Minneapolis. And I'm here today representing Twin Cities Bike Polo. Bike Polo is a sport that is similar to hockey, but on bikes and with a ball. We typically play on hard surfaces within enclosures such as tennis courts. We have been playing Bike Polo in Minneapolis Park Shore over a decade, and have participated in several of the Park Board's master plan engagement efforts. Many of the master plans have used language for multi-sport courts, and several have specifically called out Bike Polo in their plans. But as further engagement and preliminary designs have progressed, none of these parks have been able to realize a multi-sport court to accommodate Bike Polo. Specifically, the East of the River Park Master Plan, Audubon Park, identified a multi-court area for tennis, basketball, pickleball, Bike Polo. Clinton Field Park identified two multi-sport courts. I do commend NPRB for continuing to support a diversity of new and exciting uses for its parks. And also do believe that the concept for Audubon Park is great, especially the inclusion of an Equivalle Court, which is the first on the Park Board. So I'm not here in opposition of these. I am just here to clearly state that there's been two instances that have been identified for Bike Polo, and those have not been realized. I would like to continue to work for the Park Board, specifically at Central Gym Park, where we do play, to explore the improvements to there so that we can realize an improved court. Thank you.
Thank you. Quang Nguyen, followed by Karen Scholl.
Hi, Quang Nguyen, I'm a Northeast Minneapolis resident. Hey, Billy, good to see you. Also a parent and a coach. I came here on behalf of Kent and to speak in support of the new online registration system. And to be quite honest, I have no idea why there's controversy over it. My, two of my kids, three of my kids play sports. I am going to coach again this year, and I don't quite understand why there's any controversy. But the goal is, from what I understand, is equity and a better system. So my perspective as a coach is to get all kids to play. If a kid wants to play a sport, let that child play. So, and that's the whole point of it. Because, I don't know, I, I coach basically on the principles of the Positive Coaching Alliance. They're a great organization. And so I'm not a coach to win a trophy or something. I'm about teaching life skills and everything. So if this registration system is effective in getting every child who wants to play a particular sport to come out and have the ability to join the team, I'm all for that. So, I don't know, anything I can do to volunteer, I'm in a volunteer position, too. So I love the system. I love, thank you for all you do to support youth sports. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Karen Scholl, followed by Mary Randa.
Thank you, Commissioners, for letting us speak. My name is Karen Scholl. I live at thirty-nine thirty-nine Crystal Lake Boulevard in Robbinsdale. I'm a longtime North Side resident. I grew up on Victory Memorial Drive. And I'm here because I have the same concerns that Barb brought up, Barb brought up, and Latricia brought up about at-grade level with this station on the Parkway. I also just have to say that this is a memorial Parkway to World War I veterans. So I think it's sacred ground. And it's right in the middle of the Grand Round Parkway, which is dangerous, so I don't like that. And another solution would be, as you see these signs up here, that we aren't against light rail. We aren't, excuse me, we aren't against rapid transit. We are just looking for a better route for this transit. And bus rapid transit might be a good alternative. It would be less expensive. And it's portable. You can move it around. It's flexible. And this thirteen-mile track is going to cost three point two million dollars. And that would break it down to a cost of two hundred and forty-five million per mile. So I think we should look at alternatives for this light rail. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Randa, followed by Matt Burns.
Hi there. My name is Mary Randa, and I live at thirty-five fourteen Vincent Avenue North in Minneapolis. And I'm, I was at the same meeting at the Lowry Avenue Library in January. And after looking at some of the plans and knowing that at-grade is, you know, preferable for, you know, lots of reasons, one of the ideas I had was to move the location for the on-grade stop outside or closer to the Oakdale parking ramp, which would provide an at-grade location. It would be more, it would facilitate more the traffic for North Memorial employees or patients or visitors there. And while I know we need another stop in Minneapolis, we would need to look for another stop somewhere between Oakdale and Penn Avenue. I did mention this to one of the staff members for the Blue Line Extension, one of the Met Council staff. And he said, yeah, we do need that other station in Minneapolis, but this idea also has some pluses where they wouldn't have to fill in, I think, Oakdale Avenue. So there's definitely some pluses. And I think, I'll hold that thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matt Bruins, followed by Al Flowers Jr.
Hello, I'm Matt Bruins, Minneapolis resident. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing us today. I'd like to address the proposed Lowry Station and Blue Line Extension through Victory Memorial Park and the Grand Rounds Park System. These parks hold immense historical significance and are vital to the well-being of our communities. The Blue Line Extension project jeopardizes these treasured areas and will lead to irreversible damage. We must stand united in opposing this plan and holding project leaders accountable. Past experiences, such as the Southwest Light Rail, have shown that the Met Council in Hennepin County often neglect community concerns. Since 2019, thousands of residents have been unable to enjoy the Kennelworth and Cedar Lakes Trails. We fear similar disruptions will occur with the Blue Line project. The disruption of these trails has deprived residents of the vital community connections for nearly six years. There is a legitimate concern that similar disruptions will occur on the Grand Rounds. We cannot allow this to happen. Preserving our parks and ensuring the integrity of our environment must be our top priority. The project team's blatant disregard for our parks and the positions of this Board is quite simply astonishing. Section four F of the National Environmental Policy Act stipulates that government agencies cannot approve the use of recreational land for transit projects. Meanwhile, all nine of the designs that have been presented would disturb the parkland protected by these same NEPA four F regulations. The project team has made little effort in attempting to completely avoid parkland. Rather, they are determined to plow through at the detriment to future Minneapolitans. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Flowers Jr., followed by Charles Moses.
Hello, I'm Al Flowers Jr. I live in Minneapolis, South Side resident, lifelong Minneapolis resident. As I said, grew up in the parks myself. I'm coming here today to speak against the centralized registration process that we have, as I believe it will alienate over five hundred children, majority of those children, black and native, within our communities. And it will also alienate over thirty to forty coaches who volunteer and serve their time and resources to help coach these kids as well. It's simply, it's not as simple as just playing sports with us. When we're working with our kids from our community, it's bigger than that. It's the intentional relationships we build. It's not just about shooting a basketball. It's about also building them up academically, building them up as human beings so that could be productive citizens in the city of Minneapolis. We are losing a lot of our children right now. And the park holds a responsibility for that, too. These organizations that has put their time in with these young children should not be alienated based on a process that we never had an input to bring, to bring in the beginning. We're talking about five hundred children. I have asked plenty times, show me the number that the Park Board is bringing in, particularly over North Minneapolis, where our children are at, where you guys are feeling those type of numbers, and I'll stand down. But I know that's not the case, because I play in these leagues, and majority of those teams that's in these leagues are a lot of these outside agencies that you guys want to alienate with this. So I would just ask for the Park Board Commissioners to take a halt on this while, so we can come back to the table and actually sit down with these outside agencies and the athletic directors that's here so that we can come up with a plan where we don't alienate five hundred children. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Moses, followed by Jim Helber.
I think it's a joke that Mr. Quang just stood before us and wasted our time, saying he doesn't understand how centralized registration could be a detriment to the community. I couldn't help but notice his wedding band on his left hand, similar to me, I'm a married man. But eighty percent of the families that we serve and children that I serve come from single-parent households or grandparent-led households. As Mr. Al Flowers Jr. stated, our children come to us for nutrition. They come to us for homework, help, and assistance. They come to us because we help them close the educational gap. I'm sure you're aware that black children in North Minneapolis test at a seven percent proficiency grade level in math, and they test at around twelve percent in reading. Again, Hospitality House has been in the community for sixty-five years. Commissioner Thompson, you've emailed me twice while I've stood at your podium. I've responded to both of your emails and given you wide-open availability, because you stated that you don't get off work until four PM. I told you four-thirty or five PM, you pick your weeknight. No, don't thumb up me. Please respond to my emails. Commissioner Menz, if you want to meet that bad to rectify this wrong, I'm more than available. I haven't gotten any phone call. I've been standing in front of this Board now for over a month. You haven't seen fight yet. This is not fight. I'm coming to you as a friend and as an ally. Don't underestimate me, and don't underestimate my resilience.
Jim Helber, followed by TJ Valterig.
I'm Jim Helber with Minneapolis Park and, or with Minneapolis Phelps Activities Council. Concerning the Minneapolis Park and Rec Central's registration, we help register, help fund, coach, help arrange transportation for, as needed, to about three hundred urban youth, mostly of color, many who play in the Minneapolis Park and Rec Sports Leagues. In my twenty years of serving in the Phelps community and engaging youth in NPRB sports, I have seen decisions made in youth sports that have created, in the NPRB, that have created barriers and alienated many kids of color. This process of central registration is the latest decision that would impede, and again, remove lifelines for our urban youth of color. A slogan, "All Kids Play" for this, was not an issue in the past. But it will be if this centralized registration process goes into effect. But it will be the kids of color who won't play, because they won't have advocates to help them.
Thank you. Mike Tate.
Good afternoon, my friends. How are you doing? North Side resident. I'm sorry I have to bring my sign again. I mean, it just tells what we're doing. The only thing you respond to is the sign, or maybe you will feel it, the pain that we're feeling. Every day that we give our lives out here coaching these kids, there's nothing like it. It wasn't a shy day when this Park Board would use over a hundred kids on their pitches, and some of these kids going to Division One colleges. It wasn't shy then. We didn't see, where wasn't it fair? Nobody, when wasn't it fair? I want to know. As I ask all of you for the last four years, soon to be, to make a policy around recreation. Do not let them just keep throwing darts at a board and nothing works. And you can't do it without us, the community people. And if you do that, bring us to the table. We're not fighting with nobody. We just want representation for taxation. I paid taxes up for forty years. And I never complained about this Board or this park system, because I love it so much. I know what it can do to change youth's lives all over the city. But you got to allow us in the room to help you do the work for our community, our city. So how are the children? And that's what we need to focus on.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. And I, I skipped over accidentally TJ Valterig. Is TJ here? Sorry about that, sir.
So there was a mistake in writing down the names. Miami's Muckel Roberts. Drew Little Earth. I am the Red Bears Athletic Director, the Director Coach. And we have been a part of the Park Board for over ten years. Playing basketball, baseball, up until recently volleyball. I don't really know where to start. Most of the coaches here touched on everything. Like what was said, though, we are more than a coach to some of these kids. And this centralized registration is, you guys will, your numbers will decrease. you guys will, your numbers will decrease by a lot. Not just by African-American children, but also Native American children. We, some homes are, are like the gentleman said, single-parent homes, sometimes grandparents, that are incapable of getting out to park boards to sign kids up. So that's exactly what we do is we do our groundwork. We pound the pavement. We get out to Little Earth. We get these kids to sign up. Asking them to come to a park where, say like East Phillips, where majority of East Phillips is Somali and Latino. We live right across the street. Little Earth is right across the street. And kids don't find it a fair place to go because they're not represented there. But the Red Bears represent that. So please keep that in mind.
Thank you very much. That was our last speaker. And with that, I will close open time. And we'll move through the agenda into our, we have no reports of standing committees. We move into our first resolution of the night. Would somebody please move the resolution on page five?
I'll move Resolution 2024-264. This is the resolution adopting the 2025 NPRB draft federal legislative agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Is there discussion, Vice President Musich?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is not the, this is not the right item.
Okay. So with that, we will welcome Pamela Gokumayr to the podium to present the federal agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, President Abani and Commissioners. There, we don't have any staff amendments for the federal agenda, but I did want to touch on what Superintendent Bangora referred to when he was doing reports of officers with respect to the Trump administration's actions in January. On the 27th, OMB had sent a memo asking agencies to temporarily pause spending, like a spending freeze, on grants and loans and other things relating to his executive orders. And then two or three days later, the memo was rescinded, two days later. But the White House sources were still saying that the pause was in effect. A federal judge Friday night issued an opinion that the federal departments are prohibited from terminating any grants on the basis of the executive orders at this time. So we're kind of in a holding pattern with respect to how that's going to play out for many, many organizations in the country. I will say, I worked with Director Wiseman to look at our active federal grants and our Minneapolis Equitable Tree Canopy Management Program. The source of that funding is through the Inflation Reduction Act. And as part of his, Trump's executive orders, he did rescind the IRA and the Implementation and Infrastructure Jobs Act, IIJA. And that's the source, the IRA is the source of the funding for the tree program. So I'm not sure, you know, ultimately what the impact of that will be. But that's one that we will definitely be monitoring. And then looking forward, his executive order on ending DEI policies within the federal government, while it doesn't, it doesn't speak to local governments and what local governments can do, I think it's possible they could tie federal grants to that and not give federal grants to local governments that have those policies in place. But that's, that's to be determined in the future. But that's something that you're probably all aware of. And looking at, the League of Minnesota Cities has a really good website that's kind of tracking these executive orders and the current state of play on them. So that's also a helpful resource.
Thank you. Questions and discussion, Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Abani. For the IRA, I thought that was money appropriated by Congress. Was that not the case?
That's true. And, I mean, that's part of the debate is, I mean, Congress has the power of the purse, right? And so what impact his executive orders? They don't, shouldn't take precedent over what Congress has already appropriated. But there's some debate about that, I guess. And the courts will have to decide what, how that plays out. And then Congress will have to decide if they're going to honor President Trump's executive orders or not.
Okay. So if the courts strike down that executive order, the Republicans still control the federal government, so they could put forward a repeal of that act.
That's correct.
But at the time, at the time that we are speaking right now, the courts do not believe that that's a legal action. So they've put an injunction in place.
President Abani and Commissioner Musich, that, yes, that is my understanding.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Are there other questions or discussion about that item, that topic? I appreciate that presentation and that heads up. We don't seem to have a lot of direct federal dependency, I'll say. But perhaps just if things come up, you know, this is an evolving situation. So of course, bring to our attention anything that might emerge in the coming weeks. So much appreciated. With that, let's go ahead and take Resolution 2024-264 to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Can somebody move the next resolution?
I'll move Resolution 2024-265, Resolution approving the draft 2025 NPRB state legislative agenda.
Second. Is there discussion, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, President Abani. I had an amendment I'm not going to move, but I, but it speaks toward North Commons. And as we're piggybacking on the conversation we were just having about the federal spending, in my amendment, I talked, you know, it's just like the amount of money we've already put toward this, the amount of agency that our, this entire organization has leaned into. Is there, are, can someone just give me an idea of the diagnosis or prognosis of the status of this project in regard to bonding? Do we have hopes? And do we have a contingent plan if we don't get money? That's my question.
President Abani and Commissioner Thompson, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball for bonding, but, and, you know, we haven't really gotten going yet in session because of what's happening with the State House. But I, I believe there's an appetite to do a smaller bonding bill this year. It's in the range of 800 million as the target we've here bounced around. Governor Walz has released his bonding position, bonding bill. There's not very much money in there for regional park bonding. We collectively are asking for 20 million, and he has 2.3, which is real small. He doesn't have any local projects in there. He did put 40 million in collectively for local projects for the legislature to decide how to, I mean, should they use that target to allocate to their projects? I think that North Commons is in a really good position considering last session, that very small cash bill that came out at the end. We were one of the few local projects that were, that was included in that. So I think, I think it's in a really good position. How much would be allocated and when that happens is still quite unknown.
Thank you. I appreciate the staff who helped me put numbers together for the amendment that I'm not going to move. But it is definitely a concern that is kind of echoing through the district. So thank you.
Thank you. I see lobbyist Rice has put his light on.
Thank you, madam. Chair, I'll be real brief. I agree with everything Ms. Gokumayr said. We did have our delegation meeting last Friday. Pamela made it very clear as did the superintendent that the North Commons was the number one project. I think it was very clear in the room that the legislators understood that. We obviously went through the rest of the agenda, but it, we got within a minute last year of doing it. I'm meeting with Senator Pappas on Monday and about a couple of things, the Metro Park stuff. I am certainly going to tell her that, yeah, North Commons is what the Park Board wants and really needs this year. And it's a critical moment in time for us.
Thank you. Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Abani. I'd like to move a slate of amendments to the state legislative agenda that's submitted by staff. The Commissioners should have it before them, and it was published on our website for our amendment rules. The changes are striking the language around LCCMR funding and replacing it with new language, modifying the Invasive Species Emerald Dashboard Dodge Loom Disease Urban Forestry section to include language around AIS funding as well as adding duty disability and para reform to the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion about this amendment? Commissioner Alper.
Yeah, thank you, President Abani. I'm interested in hearing more from staff about the duty disability para reform clause that's been added. And I'm just going to read it. The NPRB directs staff and its lobbyists to investigate and support legislative reforms that meet the needs of police officers for services and support and clarify intent and use of these employee protections. And I would like to understand sort of the liability that we're facing and the rationale from staff for including this.
Thank you, President Abani and Commissioner Alper. Yes, this, and just to give you a little background. So in 2019, the state legislature created a workers' comp presumption for PTSD for emergency services, so police officers, firefighters. And then they, the legislature did enact some reforms in '23. But they have not had an impact for us and for other localities on the significant number of claims that are being filed. And so we're experiencing, and we've, a quarter of our police officers have filed for duty disability. So then it's a huge burden on our, you know, we don't have enough officers and it's an enormous financial burden as well. And so we're seeking the opportunity to align with other local governments, should there be an appetite for reform to try to kind of right the system. And I know the city of Minneapolis, I did talk to them a little bit at our legislative breakfast, and it is on their legislative agenda in terms of seeking a funding source for these claims because it is, I mean, it's a real large amount of money.
Yeah, so could you, so you said a quarter of the workforce. Could you just clarify some of those numbers for?
So not the work, it's the, it are police, police officers. Yes.
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 Superintendent?
Yeah, I can tell you that, you know, from, I'm sorry, Commissioner Alper. If I remember right, and Chief can correct me, I think we had six officers.
Thank you for that. And so what kind of future liabilities do you think we could potentially be facing if this, if some reform does not occur?
President Abani, Commissioner Alper. I think that as we stated, this is something we're trying, it's, we understand PTSD is a real thing, it's very serious. And so we want to make sure we acknowledge folks that have, and officers and far they have gone through some very traumatic things. I think when this, this presumption that has come forward, it's wrought with some really challenges in it. And again, I don't want to get too specific into it. But it is causing a real concern for us. We've been settling somewhere between 115,000 to $180,000 kind of settlements, right? And those, as we sit and we now, since this has happened, we are now seeing, prior to that, we didn't have really any PTSD claims. Now we're seeing it on a regular basis. It's happening just more often, and it's impacting us as an organization. And as we said, so, you know, there's a concern here, and we are trying to take steps and move forward and work with our partners to, to address the concern and the issues that we're facing. In particular, the way that it works through the workman's comp. And it's been, and again, with more detail, which I don't want to share here at this point. But there are, there are some real concerns that are, that's built into this that is causing this to be more frequent. And with that, we are experiencing, you know, officers that, now again, that we've gone through six, and it's impacting us and also financially. As we sit in the room here and work the workman's comp, it's significant. And it's a real concern. And it's something that we take very seriously. Chief has been very clear about this, and we're trying very hard to really align ourselves with other agencies and folks to be able to really address the issue that's facing us. And I think it's also facing other, other departments along with this. We are just very aware that we have 35 officers sworn, and now we have six that have applied. So it's a real concern.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. And I'm very much in support of this. And I think it's a huge issue that I've seen, at least in, for the city of Minneapolis and other jurisdictions as well. And so I'm glad that we're taking this on. And I'm hopeful that if the city of Minneapolis has some particular language that is worth incorporating into our state legislative agenda, that we'll consider that at a future meeting to see if that would strengthen this, this piece here. I mean, I certainly see it as a, as a, as a risk to our organization. So I'm grateful to staff for putting it on and for the additional information.
Thank you for those comments. Other comments, questions, discussion? I guess I'm also glad that we've, you, the staff flagged the aquatic invasive species line item change from the governor's budget. I think it's important to continue that work. It's working. It doesn't mean that what people are doing or what we're doing is working, which means we have to keep doing it. So, okay. With that, I think we'll go ahead and move this to a vote. All, this is the amendment, however.
Yes.
All those in favor of the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that passes. The amendments are now added to Resolution 2024-265. Is there any discussion about the resolution? Seeing none? All those in favor of Resolution 2024-265, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that resolution passes. Okay, we'll now be moving down to unfinished business. Can somebody move the resolution, please?
I'll move Resolution 2025-6. It's a resolution amending the Cedar Riverside Recreation Center pre-design.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think that we will see a presentation on this because I think it's, I think the, what's, what's in front of us here is worthy of a presentation so we can understand it and have the opportunity to ask questions. So, thank you, Mr. Elise.
Thank you, President Abani. Commissioners, Resolution 2025-6 is an amendment to the Cedar Riverside Recreation Center pre-design, which was approved in July of 2021. So I'll give you a brief refresh on that pre-design, talk about what's been happening since, give you a summary of the amendment, and then why this amendment is important before Commissioner questions. So the July 21st, a board-approved pre-design did note that the preferred site for the new recreation center was in Curry Park. And this was because the Park Board lacked site control of both the Brian Coyle Community Center as well as any other site around Curry Park that was viable for a new recreation center. However, there was a strong desire, both from the Community Advisory Committee, our partner organization team that included Pillsbury United Communities, the YMCA, M Health, and Augsburg, as well as from Park Board staff, to really envision a new recreation center outside of Curry Park, which would allow us to, in theory, demolish the Brian Coyle Center and expand the green space in the Cedar Riverside neighborhood. So since the pre-design approval in July of 2021, Sherman Associates has had their two-year development agreement extended by the city of Minneapolis. And the city of Minneapolis has formally included Minneapolis has formally included the approved use of a nearby lot called Lot AA1, that's currently a surface parking lot, to have the use of a recreation center on that lot. The state of Minnesota has also allocated a total of $8.5 million toward the project, and staff have been continuing to have discussions around zoning changes and property transfer options that would allow a portion of that surface parking lot to become future park board property. And so the amendment to the pre-design today is really to formalize the board's approval of a change of language within the document that is aligned with what the Community Advisory Committee had originally hoped we could achieve at the time, really to note that Lot A and A1 is the pre, the preferred site for the new recreation center pending site control. And while Curry Park would remain in the document as currently viable, it would not be noted as the preferred site any longer with this amendment. We've also added some graphics, as well as some additional documentation within the document, to just make that abundantly clear and to show what the Lot AA1 site entails. And then finally, you know, this is important for staff at this time, because it does give us clear policy guidance from the board to allow us to continue to engage in negotiations and conversations with the city, the county, and the Sherman Associates team around the future of the surface parking lot. I mean, it gives us obviously clear direction for the project, and it also allows us to clearly communicate to our state delegation as this project remains on the 2025 state legislative agenda. And that's my presentation. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Elber.
Yeah, I would just like to speak in support of this resolution and encourage you all to vote for it. I think Lot AA1 has been a clear choice moving forward, and it allows, this is a very small park, and by building on Lot AA1, which is a very funny term, I just want to acknowledge that, but that's, that's what we got, that it allows for the, the new building to be built, the old building to be used, and then demolished, and then additional parkland to be created. So I'm supportive of this.
Yes. Thank you for that, those comments, and of course, it is one of the things we'll be talking to the legislature about this year. So having this, the technicalities, the due diligence done is good. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, then let's go to vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2024-6, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We, we do have an open, time certain item coming up on the planning committee, I believe. So, but we have some time, that's 6:30. So now, the next item is a discussion item on the Blue Line Extension LRT design update. Here comes Mr. Arvidson.
Thank you, President Abani. We're here tonight to provide a discussion item update on the Blue Line Extension Light Rail project, which obviously, community members here tonight spoke about during open time. As many of you know, we've discussed this project in front of this board before, and also this board approved a comment letter on the supplemental draft environmental impact statement, which asked the project office to address certain specific concerns of the Park Board. Many of those concerns were subsequently echoed by the city of Minneapolis in its municipal consent language. And since that time, it's my opinion, as the staff member pointed to work on this project, that the project office has, has done a lot of due diligence, in line with those specific things that we asked them to do. That's not to weigh in on any particular option that you will see, but just as being one who meets weekly with the design team and has been participating in multiple workshops, I do think there's been a sincere effort to respond to the concerns and to provide the information that you all requested in your supplemental draft environmental impact statement letter. So tonight, most of this is going to be a presentation by the project office, and they're going to go through specifically some designs and some next steps around the Lowry Avenue station, which is, of course, it goes without saying, the point where the light rail, as proposed, would touch the parkland the most. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the project office. We have Kelsey Young and Ryan Kronzer here. I'm going to be nearby if you have questions for me at the end, but certainly, I think mostly, it's their show, so I will welcome them.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, President Abani and commissioners, for having us here tonight. We're happy to have this opportunity to provide updates about our continued design development and future coordination with you all around the Lowry Station as part of the Blue Line Extension project. These are the topics that we'll walk through as part of our presentation here today, with an intention to get to some discussion time and provide that opportunity for you all to give your input. What brought us here today is input that we received related to the, the design that was presented as part of the municipal consent design package, as well as the supplemental draft environmental impact statement. As we were here before you last summer discussing this topic, you had provided comments during that comment period on the supplemental draft environmental impact statement, expressing concerns and also in meetings about the, the at-grade crossing of the parkway and the light rail, as well as impacts to park property. In addition to that, we also heard concerns and input from other stakeholders, including how people can reach North Memorial Hospital, including both emergency vehicles and, and people arriving there in private vehicles due to the, the gate at Lowry and Oakdale. We also heard from the city of Minneapolis echoing concerns from, from the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, as well as North Memorial Hospital, and asked that we continue to review the station design. We also heard from the city of Robinsdale echoing those concerns shared by the hospital, as well as concerns expressed by community members about those gated crossings, the interaction of the, the light rail and the parkway, and also how people can reach the hospital. So all of the, all of this input, as well as our continued design advancement, has led us to continue that exploration of station options at, at Lowry Avenue. Since that time that we were last before you, we've engaged a stakeholder, a stakeholder working group to form a continued evaluation of the, both the, the design presented in the municipal consent design package, as well as additional alternatives. That working group includes both staff from the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, North Memorial Hospital, the cities of Minneapolis, and Robinsdale, Pennington County, and Metro Transit. And so through that design review process, we developed additional options, and at this time, nine options have been developed and considered and brought forward in, for continued outreach from stakeholders and community, community members. So over the last six months, we've had four design-focused workshops with that stakeholder working group. These, these nine station concept designs have been evaluated. We had two public open houses, one in Robinsdale in December and one in Minneapolis in January, with over 90 people attending between those two meetings, and lots of input being expressed by community members and stakeholders in those meetings. We also had an online survey to, to gather input. To summarize what we've been hearing so far, and Ryan will walk through the range of options here a bit, too. So to give a little context, that option A is that design that was reflected in the supplemental draft environmental impact statement and the municipal consent design with the at-grade station and light rail crossing the parkway. Option H is, has received some discussion here already tonight, but that includes both an at-grade station, as well as resolving that the, the parkway and the light rail no longer cross each other, they're grade separated, and Ryan will provide some additional walkthrough in detail on that. What option H does not include is a direct connection between the parkway and Lowry Avenue. So what we are hearing from community members is kind of a mixed, mixed opinions about that. Some have expressed that that is a good thing in terms of the function of the parkway. Others believe that that, that is a downside to option H, and of course, interested in this entity's opinions about, about that connection and its criticality. Other concerns that we've been hearing about in our public engagement, continued discussion and concerns around the, the gates and the, in the options where there is crossing with light rail, concerns around construction disturbance, noise and vibration, the impacts of the project on parkland, safety and security of, of having a station at Lowry, and traffic impacts on Botno Boulevard or County Road 81. So that's a, a brief summary of what we've been hearing, and this, this engagement has, has informed our continued design evaluation of, of these options. Then I'll ask Ryan to walk through these options.
Sure. So I will spend a little bit of time walking through some of these options with you tonight. But first, some objectives. When we design things, we like to set down some goals. So these are the goals the working group came up with several years ago now, when looking at the design of the Lowry Avenue station for a Blue Line Extension. So those are provide transit service to the park, to the park patrons, improve transit access to the hospital, increase transit service to adjacent neighborhoods, and provide a station that's integrated into the surrounding park environment. So has, as been noted already this evening, the working group looked at nine different options. You see those nine options here. They range from the existing design that's in the miss consent package, A, to a tunnel, to a trench, to stations at the West Broadway level, so a level above the park, looking at putting the parkway underneath all of what's going on here, looking at different configurations of parkway trail going underneath light rail. G is the giant flyover bridge that was previously presented to this body nearly two years ago. And then option H is, which you've heard about tonight, we'll go in more detail into that. I do have details of all these options. I'm not going to go in detail to all of them. If you have any questions about any of them, please let me know, and we can pull up those details during the Q and A portion of tonight. But I want to spend most of my time talking about option H. Working with staff, we feel this is the option that addresses most of the issues as addressed and identified in the SDIS letter from this body. So let me get into that. As part of the evaluation process and the public engagement, we developed this matrix. You can see that nine, excuse me, nine options across the top, and then the criteria, there's eight criteria that we use to compare these options together. I'll run through them really quickly. Station access and experience, park and trail impacts, access to the hospital, traffic operations, neighborhood connectivity, impacts to the bridges on 81, West Broadway, constructability, and cost. There's a lot of information here. Happy to go through a lot of this detail, but let me get into some more of the specifics of the design. Just to ground us, this is the option that was commented on in the SDIS letter and the city's miss consent resolution. So this is what we want to leap off from. Here's just another view of that. You know, some of these developments that we've been looking at with this option include better wayfinding for ambulances to the hospital. We can answer more questions if you have those on this option. This is one shot looking north up the parkway at the gated crossings that haven't mentioned. So the, the road away on the left is the parkway, the grand round trail's on the left, and this, this train is pointing to the station. So option H, option H and option A actually look a lot alike if you look at it from above, but there are some major differences that I will walk through. I think I'll go through different elements, so we can kind of hopefully be on the same page as what this design is. So with the parkway, if we start at the lower end of the picture, the parkway comes up from the south. It reaches three bridges. Two of those bridges are West Broadway, and one of them is for light rail. So the parkway is then grade separated from light rail at that point. The parkway then extends up towards Lowry and then goes underneath Lowry Avenue. So again, the parkway is grade separated from Lowry Avenue, and then continues on and connects to Victor Memorial Parkway. And I will say, our construction limits are just south of that start of Victor Memorial Parkway, so we basically have a very light touch into Victor Memorial at that point. With the park itself, so the parkway slides to the east, which would be under new parkland. So the existing parkland where the parkway exists would then be parkland that would be more usable. You can see that larger green space in the middle of this drawing is essentially where the parkway is today. So potentially more parkland, a lot more detail to develop with that. Looking at the LRT, so the LRT is starting from the lower right corner of the, of the page. It is between the two lanes of West Broadway. It then, like I mentioned, it's on a bridge over the parkway. The station then comes to grade or ground. So the access to the station is all at grade. There's no stairs, there's no elevators. It's easy access for people walking past through the station or going to the station itself. And we have some more graphics that we can see that a little more clearly. The LRT then extends underneath a new intersection of Lowry and West Broadway, so there is no gated crossing or at-grade crossing of Lowry going to the hospital as well. And then the light rail then extends into Robinsdale. Lowry Avenue, from the right upper area of this drawing, then extends to the west. It's on a bridge over the parkway again, and then intersects County Road 81 and West Broadway at a more traditional 408 intersection. Those of you familiar with how the West Broadway intersects the parkway, there's a series of on and off ramps, so to speak, that connect the parkway up to Lowry and West Broadway. That connection is simplified into a more traditional 408 intersection. West Broadway itself, again, is on either side of the light rail. We, we do rebuild and reconstruct two bridges, we extend two bridges and add two bridges. So there is more bridge in this option. That's an important factor in considering options. And then Washburn Avenue, which is on the right edge of this page, closer to this, you're seeing that, the tank gabled church there, Washburn is then shifted to the east about 20 feet. That's all within existing public right-of-way, but it is a change to that design. Here's a different view. A few things to note here. This is about 10% design level, so it's very early, but we do believe it's about another year of construction in this area. We do not yet know, we do not know yet, what it, what it might mean for the overall schedule of the project, but we do know there's more construction here with the additional bridges, which will take longer to construct. Again, we are estimating this option to a cost of an additional $50 million to the project. We're still at an early stage, but that's our estimate at this point. I do want to talk a little bit about traffic. Part of the environmental process is looking at traffic. So we've taken a fairly high-level pass, excuse me, looking at what traffic would do with this option. So you've heard already that the parkway is not connected to Lowry, it's not connected to West Broadway. There, there are no intersections or reasons to stop through this area when you're on the parkway. What that means, though, is traffic will then get redistributed through this area. One interesting thing we found was, when we looked at travel demand in the larger area, that people were using the parkway for regional trips. They were using the trip to come from Highway 100 up through Lowry. They would actually use the parkway to make that trip. So looking at what it might mean without those regional trips on the parkway, traffic will get redistributed to different routes. So folks might take Golden Valley Road to Penn Avenue, they might take 100 up to 36. We actually have noticed that more traffic would be on 29th Street. We're not exactly sure exactly the magnitude, but we definitely see an increase on our early analysis there. There's a lot of local street connections and grid here, so most of the local traffic will just meander themselves through the local pattern to get to the parkway.
No, I'm going to note that right here, smack dab in the
No, I'm going to note that right here, smack dab in the middle of your presentation, is our time certain item. So we have to, um, recess this meeting for now and, um, turn this meeting over to, uh, planning chair, the vice chair of the planning committee to convene that meeting. We're just recessed.
Okay.
You can convene.
Okay. Okay, the timing, six, 6:30. Um, I'd like to call the meeting of the planning committee to order. Secretary Ringo, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Elfer.
Present.
Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, would someone like to move our agenda for us?
I'll move the agenda.
Thank you. Any comments, seeing no lights, um, all those in favor of our agenda, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, can someone move our, our minutes from January 7th?
I can move the minutes of the planning committee from January 7th, 2025.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor of adding the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now we have a public hearing for Franklin Steel Square, and we have no signups, so I believe I have to say it three times, is there anyone here who would like to speak towards the item of Franklin Steel Square Concept Plan? Would anyone like to speak toward this park plan? Anybody in the room who would like to speak toward the concept plan of Franklin Steel Square? Seeing no takers, I will now close the public meeting, um, on that topic. Thank you. And now we need to move the resolution and finish our planning committee agenda. Would anyone like to move that for me?
I'll move Resolution 2025 dash 11. Resolution approving the preferred concept plan for Franklin Steel Square Playground and Park Improvement Project.
Thank you, Commissioner Rucker. Do we have a presentation on this or need it? Uh, Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, I would like to have a brief presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you, you're welcome. I don't have the official chair's notes, so I don't get all the fun little red marks. Sorry, please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, President Bennie and Commissioners. Uh, today I'm pleased to present the Franklin Steel Square Playground and Park Improvements Project. For those that aren't too familiar with Franklin Steel, um, this park is located on the southern portion of the Downtown Service Area Plan. Um, zooming into the park itself, um, within the Elliott neighborhood, this park just sits north of I-94, uh, and borders Portland Avenue, Portland is on its eastern border of the park. Um, as the park sits today, um, it has an existing community garden, a pavilion, splashpad, playground, and half-court basketball. Starting community engagement, we first looked towards the approved master plan as a framework. This plan looks to update and relocate a few features within the park. Um, some of those features that were looked, that were looked at the approved master plan was the community gardening area, um, looking to expand that area. Also converting the existing half-court basketball to a full court while keeping the existing pavilion and splashpad. It also looked to relocate the playground to a more of a visibility, visible area within the park, um, and then preserve, uh, some sort of green space or gray lawn. We also wanted to make sure as we go to community that we understand what funding is available for this project. Uh, current funding available is park dedication, capital levy funding, NPP 20 funds, um, subtract that with design fees, environmental administration, um, and management, we're looking at projects about $1.5 million to construct. So using that feedback as a framework going into community engagement, we started to, uh, collect and start to host events. So first, we hosted several events within Franklin Steel Square, um, trying to understand how the community uses the space, watching people use the park, engaging with those, what did they like to see, what would they like to be part of this improvement project? Uh, we also hosted several focus groups outside of the park, um, understanding those key stakeholders. So we actually held a, an event right inside Madison Apartments. This is an apartment building that's just north, so it's just north of Franklin Steel Square, um, understanding how they use the park, how, what they'd like to see within the park itself. Um, are there any things that we do, need to worry about or anything of a concern? And then also we hosted a, an event inside of the Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge. Uh, they are right next to the park, adjacent, um, wanting to understand how they use it as well. We talked to staff, um, learned how the residents use the park as well and kind of times of day, as it's very restricted on that aspect. And then finally, we've been collaborating with the EPNI, the Elliott Neighborhood Park, uh, community, just understanding how they use it, um, pairing with them and specific meetings, events, and just to better understand how the residents within Elliott Park use that specific park. So using all that feedback, um, we really learned and found three main findings within that. Um, those categories were expand programming, promote safety, increase community connections. Um, as far as programming, really understanding that the playground is dated. Um, that was the number one priority as far as the community, they would like to see a new playground. Uh, also, is there new opportunities that could be expanded within the park, sports or outdoor activities? And as far as safety, um, safety in the Elliott Park neighborhood is one of the forefront items that have been talked even at Elliott Park. Um, so understanding that aspect, but also working with our park police, um, that park itself has a limited access for them to patrol. So understanding how can we work with them to make sure that the community is safe within that park design? And then finally, the idea of community connections, um, there's an existing community garden, how can we look to expand and improve that garden, um, as many residents have a hard time actually reserving a place there, so understanding it's a need of the Rosens and the local community. Which brings us to the preferred final concept design. Um, using all the feedback engagement that we use, um, this was a plan that was, um, highly talked about within the community with the design concepts, and I'll walk you through that design. So looking at expanding programming, this preferred concept looks to, uh, expand existing half-court basketball to a full court. It also looks to relocate it off of Portland for safety concerns that came up through community engagement. This also looks to formalize the green space that is there today into a youth-sized soccer field, um, the size of this park is similar to what Curry, Curry Field is today. Um, and then also the playground, as the community mentioned, is a number one priority. Looking at a playground that could look towards youth, but also activate youth and teens and adults. So playground would have a portion of a toddler park within it, but also an, an adult and youth challenge course, which was highly desired within the community. The next is to look at safety, environmental design within this embedded into the design. Thoughts were improving sightlines and visibility within the park. Also increased access points for park police and maintenance was highly desired. Uh, as you can see, there's a, a spine that connects all those main features, giving opportunities for our internal staff and park police to maintain and control, but also look at the site features that are highly visible from the street. And then finally, increased community connections. Um, we were listening to the community, they understand that the community garden is a need, how can we look to expand that? This plan looks to double that existing community garden, um, and create new opportunities for local stakeholders and residents, um, within that neighborhood. Uh, this plan was presented to the neighborhood and shared, I really haven't heard many negative feedbacks in regards to that. However, we have received a few comments of concern, uh, with the use of artificial turf. Uh, we understand there's a board action in 2017 that looks to, uh, advise staff to look towards alternative use or versus chrome rubber. Um, we'd like to further investigate what that would look like for eco, uh, sustainable solution versus the chrome rubber. Um, we understand that has a cost implication, maintenance programs, how do we best make this field playable for the long term? So we'd like to further investigate that. However, the alternate, excuse me, the artificial turf, um, was highly recommended actually, um, in a portion of the playground. Uh, the challenge course, um, was recommended to have an artificial turf, uh, surface for that location, just due to its playability, the way people use that site element, just for the turning and movement that would be looked at. Uh, we would look towards some sort of artificial turf that is eco-friendly, sustainable, similar to what we do in our park playgrounds today. Uh, with that, I would like to thank you and open up for any questions.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Jones, for all your community engagement and, um, Elliott Park and Franklin Steel. The community has been really thrilled. A couple of questions, um, really think that the addition of the soccer field is huge. Um, and, and we've heard that from lots of corners of the community of really trying to get additional field space from the footsaw leagues, from, you know, free people that want to use them that are less, more of a pickup group, so thank you for incorporating that, I think that's really exciting. Couple of questions, are, will there be lights or is there any kind of boundary on the side of the field with Portland?
President Bennie, Commissioner Schaefer, um, lighting has been talked about, we would be updating path lighting, but as far as the field itself, uh, we would look to bring in the infrastructure to get it there today, so adding lights wouldn't be part of this project, but thinking long-term if that would be a need and of the community and also within our park system for safety purposes, it would be ready for that, for future use.
Okay, I think that's really what's attractive about Elliott Park is just, uh, the surface that's, um, you know, artificial, the people like that and the, and the lights, but if there's some kind of opportunity for, um, artificial turf that's environmentally friendly, um, I think that could be really, uh, a plus and a draw that would really activate that space even more with the lighting. Um, and no, no fencing or anything along the street, shrubbery or, um, because a lot of times I think these might be youth, youth soccer groups using this field.
President Bennie and Commissioner Schaefer, we actually were looking to propose, uh, low ornamental fencing along the Portland side, and then also thinking of how soccer is played, um, soccer ball's being kicked, making sure that doesn't go into the street. So there would be some safety aspects with a little bit of, I would say, landscape and greenery that would be adjacent with that along the sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm excited about the plan.
Uh, seeing no other lights, I, I would just say I have, I do have a problem with turf, artificial turf. And, uh, uh, Chair Forni, who's not here, she and I had a long conversation regarding that, and, cause I believe ideologically and just environmentally we're on the same page. Um, I'll, I'll, uh, this like goes against e- everything to ever vote for something with a turf field, and yet I understand in highly, highly, highly impacted play areas, it's just so much easier for our organization to manage that. Um, so, uh, those are my two cents, but I will probably let it go forward. Yes, Commissioner Menz, would you like to speak on that?
Thanks, I wasn't going to say anything, I appreciate you letting me speak on this committee. I am very interested in the exploration of what deems environmental versus non-environmental in regards to turf. There is a lot of, uh, um, progress on that, and, and it would be really interesting to figure out what our stance should be. Uh, and I think I hear Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Forni, I know, has issues, but there could be a really good environmental option, or at least as good as the playgrounds we're putting in. I mean, those don't have an end-of-use sort of option either. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna look at this turf issue, I think it's something that the board might really want to take up, so I hope that, I don't know what the process you're going through, but I'm really excited to see what you, what you uncover as current science dictates.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I just have one other philosophical question in regards to the change of the master plan to where we ended with the preferred final plan. Cause amendments came up earlier in our discussion this evening. We, how, how, the soccer field was not an additional thing in the original master plan. How do staff determine when does something need, when does a change that, actually the real community right there in the space desired, comes into a plan or comes out of a plan, um, that's not an official amendment?
Uh, yeah, Chair Thompson, Commissioner Schaefer, I'll, I'll try to answer this one, um, because sometimes I'm involved with staff in those kind of conversations. I think the main litmus test for us as staff is, um, does putting something, do it, but is doing something different in the park from what's exactly in the master plan, take a use away from someone? So is there something that is sacrificed in order to be able to put this facility in? So in the, in the, in the Franklin Steel plan today, there is an open field space, um, and this soccer field sort of formalizes that open field space, but all of the other elements that are included in the master plan are still there. They're slightly rearranged because through concept planning, sometimes we find, um, better ideas when we talk to the public about the arrangement. Sometimes we find technical reasons that we have to move them about. Um, but in reality, all the things that you see on the screen here in front of you are already in the master plan, and then that open field space still exists, but it is also striped for soccer. Um, so our big litmus test is, are we, are we taking away a use that people would have expected to be in that park after the engagement process that we did? And in the case of Franklin Steel here, we don't believe that that is the case.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President, usage.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, I'm not on this committee, so I appreciate being given an opportunity to speak. Um, I'm gonna share the concerns of my colleagues around the current state of, uh, research around artificial turf. I would like to better understand, uh, where that's at. We have not been, we've not received as a board an update on the most recent, uh, available research, I'm very interested in understanding that. I would also note that, um, beyond just the environmental impacts of it, both to humans as well as the environment in general, I have had quite a few, um, student, parents of student athletes as well as professional athletes, uh, talk to me about the increase of injuries, um, serious injuries to people playing on artificial, artificial turf, particularly children, because they're a bit more, um, their bodies are a bit more loose than adults, so it's easier for them to have, uh, injuries occur on this type of bouncy surface. So I'd like to also, when we do get some sort of update on environmental impacts, have included in that available research on whether or not we're increasing the potential for injury to people that are playing on it. And that's all I had to add, thank you.
Seeing no other lights, I would echo that too. My, my issue with turf does not stop at environmental stuff. I have intimate knowledge of this from my long time and my former spouse's long, many years as coaches. And, um, it, not only you get rubber literally everywhere, I mean, the impact of that alone is, is enormous, but the amount of young people that I've seen that, young ages that have torn ACLs and MCLs, uh, it's just, it's, it shouldn't happen to young people, and it's almost entirely due to the turf. Aaron Rodgers, his career, like, who, who else was it, somebody like, there was just a turf injury in football? Um, so I don't, I, I will vote for this out of committee, but I don't know that I will support, uh, artificial turf at the full board. Yeah, Commissioner Schaefer.
Um, I just want to point out that I don't think it's designated artificial at this point in time. It's, it's kind of TBD.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. All right, seeing no lights, all those in favor of Resolution 2025 dash 11, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you post? That carries, someone like to move our last one? Our second one, second slash last. I'll move it, tw- Resolution 2025 dash 15, a resolution con- concurring with the Federal Transit Authority's de minimis finding under Section 4F of the Transportation Act of 1966 for the Blue Lion Lake Street mid, Blue Lion Lake Street Midtown Station renovation project adjacent to and within the park property known as Market Square. And would anyone like to see a, an update on this, on this plan, or are we okay? Yeah, Commissioner, uh, yes.
Yes, I'm interested.
Sorry. Let's, please, Director Alvinson. Thank you, Commissioner Elfer.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, Commissioner Alper. This feels like, uh, Groundhog Day, which just happened, but I'm gonna turn it over to Metro Transit again. Trying to decide which Metro Transit group gets to treat the other to dinner tonight. Sorry, let me find my, my view here. There we go. There we go. Okay, so I'm actually going to introduce Christina Morrison for Metro Transit. Um, this is a project, um, that again, uh, you've seen a study item in the past. Metro Transit is, uh, planning to renovate the Blue Lion's Lake Street, uh, Midtown Station, uh, which exists adjacent to Market Square Park, which is owned by the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. Uh, this is not a presentation item, we are actually asking for a formal action around 4F, which is something that's been very much talked about, um, uh, with regard to transit projects in general. Um, but I just do want to at the beginning of this be clear, because these two things are kind of crashing into each other tonight. This is the existing Blue Lion Lake Street Station, which is planning to be renovated, and this particular action has no- And this particular action has nothing to do with the Blue Line Extension, whose presentation we are also in the middle of. So with that, I will turn it over to Christina Morrison and her team.
Thank you very much, Chair and committee members. I'm Christina Morrison. I was here back in October to present to this group and I'm a Principal Project Coordinator at Metro Transit in Engineering and Facilities. So just a little bit of a recap. As we heard, we are doing a major renovation of this Blue Line Lake Street Station. The station is 20 years in service. It is one of our most heavily used light rail stations in the system and it's in need of some care and some upgrades. And as part of this, we're taking an opportunity to look at a major accessibility improvement on the south side of the station with the addition of a new pedestrian ramp. That helps us meet our project goals, which include first and foremost, sort of improving accessibility to this grade separated station, improving the customer experience and making the station overall easier to maintain. We've learned a lot about maintaining stations over the last 20 years of our metro's system in service. And then we are currently in the design and engineering phase. This project is slated for construction starting a little over a year from now, so in the spring of '26. So in working with the park board staff, we've been really focused on integrating, how can we complement and support the existing Market Square, which is a relatively young park space? It's been, I think it was just completed in about 2021. So looking for ways to sort of round out the activation programming, thinking about how we can help align some of our safety and security efforts in this area by doing things like creating clear entrances to the park, helping define some of the edges where some of our like technical equipment and things like that are, really using activation as a way to bring safety, personal safety and comfort to the park and doing that while we're improving access to the station. And these are just a few images of Waterworks Park, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. It has served as one of the sort of inspiration points for how to integrate a ramp into, you know, into a grade separated area and really make it feel like an amenity. And then also showing 35 and Lake, this is a station on the Orange Line in South Minneapolis, where we've done a lot with public art and with variable lighting to really create a safe and welcoming atmosphere. So as was mentioned, tonight, we want to talk about Section 4F coordination. So Section 4F, as I'm sure you all know, is the, sort of the consideration of the use of parkland as part of federally funded transportation projects. We initiated this work formally in October after coming to the planning committee and we've been working closely with staff to talk about what are the potential mitigations and design requirements that we see as we want to work through the design of this potential ramp. So just a note here on the ownership, this is a little bit of a strange parcel where we have kind of the L-shaped green area is owned by NPRB and the triangular parcel adjacent to the light rail station is owned by Met Council. So we're working kind of across property lines to design this improvement. But clearly NPRB has jurisdiction here when it comes to the, the concurrence on the parkland. And then just, you know, I've kind of said this already, but really thinking about how can we collaborate to improve outcomes for the park and for the station? So looking at how, this is a little bit of a plan view and it's kind of hard to see here because it has some of the proposed easement areas laid over it, but this is, can you see my cursor? Yeah. Okay. This is a little bit of this, this ramp area down here. You can see there's some, what look like stairs on the outside of it are kind of this integrated tiered seating that face the market. So it could be used for people, you know, picturing grab your snack and sit on the stairs and listen to some music and enjoy sort of the, the green space and the playground. Oops. I think I hit this, this button with my sleeve.
Let's see what we can do here.
Well, that was dramatic, wasn't it? Uh oh, media card.
I'm not sure I know what the password is.
Oh, the password.
Oh, there it is.
What's hidden, that's very secret. Sorry about that. I've never done that before. All right. Okay, I'm just going to steer clear of this, of this keyboard here. So you can see, part of the ramp appears on this Met Council Transit property. Part of it is towards the southern end of Market Square and that's where we would be approaching this group for easements, permanent easements, so that we would construct and maintain all of those, that new ramp and seating. There's also a larger area of temporary easement or permit that would be in order to tie into some of the existing grades and surfaces as well as utilities. We have some utilities to kind of move around that are currently in the council property. And then there's this sort of sliver up to the northern part of the park as your Pritch Lake Street. That's for an aerial easement to allow for the construction of a new canopy over the platform. So some of the potential mitigations, and there's a number of these slides about potential mitigations. These are ones that we have talked about sort of with staff and sort of looking at exploring all of these different things in order to make sure that the transit project benefits the park space. So the first is that we want to create a license or an agreement that would allow for continued use of the Metro Transit property for the Farmers Market. This is an area where, due to the development of the surrounding area and the park, Hennepin County actually holds the lease today and we think it makes a lot of sense to replace that lease with one that is directly with the park board. And then we also are looking at, as I mentioned, integrated seating. These are just a couple examples from Mill City and from Target Field Station of how people can appreciate the integrated seating and lighting and sort of create spaces that people want to be in and enjoy. We're also thinking about how to really connect the station to the area around it. As you all know, the, the High Lake area has changed a lot in the last 20 years with transit oriented development, new housing, there's a county service center there. And so thinking about how do we bring people on foot, on bike, through this area to this area into the market? You actually see here, there's a vertical, or sorry, vehicular circulation, purple arrow, that actually is related to the market load in and load out that's used. So just thinking about all of these different pieces that have to come together and making sure that those are accounted for in the design as well as the, the goal of providing this new ADA access between the market and the park and the light rail station above. We also have a trail, kind of a piece of a trail that goes down to 31st Street that is in need of bringing up to compliance with ADA. That's something that we can do with this project to help improve ADA access to the park from the south. As I mentioned, Hennepin County holds the lease for that triangular parcel in this area. That was part of the original construction of the park prior to it being dedicated as parkland. And we've been working with them to talk about how we're going to relocate utilities and we think in some ways we can improve some of the access points for the vendors, whether it's water access or power access. A few years in the space, I think, helps define sort of what we can do a little bit better and so we can take advantage of that. We're also maintaining access to most of the market stalls. The, I will say that the stalls that you see that are towards the southern end of the park would be moved further, further towards Lake Street, which I think is a benefit from a visibility and just sort of circulation standpoint. So working closely with park board staff, but also having a good understanding from the vendor, Corcoran Neighborhood Organization that runs the market. They've run the market here for, I believe, over 20 years. They may predate the light rail station being here. And then we also want to account for, there is currently a playground, these playground structures that are installed partially on council property. We're going to relocate them within the site as part of the design and make sure that they're still accessible to people using those during the market and kind of flowing with the redesign of that corner of the site. So as was mentioned, today, we're requesting your concurrence on a de minimis impact. We believe that this new ramp provides sort of overall benefits to Market Square. We think we can improve the access, really integrate those two spaces. One of the things we've heard from the community here is that the market and the light rail station are both really important and together they sort of strengthen that relationship. We also have this opportunity here to create new seating, new lighting, new programming space while preserving those original market functions that the space was designed for. And this is just a little bit of the weeds of what a de minimis impact is, just that sort of taken whole, once the mitigation is outlined and implemented, that it would not adversely affect the features, attributes or activities in the property for protection under Section 4F, which is Market Square. I've mentioned this a little bit, but we are continuing to sort of work through, so following the 4F process, we continue to work through the easement, temporary and permanent easement negotiations, you could say. That's something that's sort of a separate but concurrent process. And we also are looking at the potential for a land exchange between the Met Council and NPRB that could be part of this discussion. We also, I did say this already, but looking at creating a fresh agreement for this area, it's changed quite a bit. Having a license or an agreement directly with NPRB will benefit, I think, both parties and just having clarity about the existing uses. We're also looking, as part of that, we can look at potential for storage needs that has been something that's been brought up on the park side where we're building this new building on the south side of the station. We are looking at expanding sort of our back of house spaces as well. So our next steps are to continue to work with the staff on the design of the, the station, the ramp and all of the kind of integrated seating pieces. We also are having a public open house. I'll put in a plug for next Tuesday at the Coliseum Building right on Lake Street, just east of the light rail station from 6:00 to 7:30. So last, we had one in October. We had about 50 people attend, was great. We had a lot of really good, good conversations and hoping for another large turnout next week. And then continuing to work on interagency agreements as we move towards construction in order to keep the market in place and functioning into the future. And I think that's all I have, but happy to answer questions.
Anyone? Yes, Commissioner Alper.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm very excited for the new design and look forward to how it will change how the, you know, the interplay between the park and the light rail station. As someone who lives in the neighborhood, who goes to this market, who takes the light rail from this station, I think it'll be great, great improvements. Appreciate you diving into the details. So the sidewalk, if you go back to slide two, that picture shows the sidewalk on the left, is that going to change or is that going to stay the same?
So Chair Commissioners, this would be roughly, this sidewalk would be roughly in the same place. This is where those market stalls line up along the B-side apartment building today. That would be in the same place. There will be a little bit of maybe regrading to tie back into it, but it would be essentially the same.
Okay, but is that sidewalk planning to be redone?
I believe it's within, part of it is within the construction limits. I could check on that. I'm not, not sure if all of it would be redone.
Okay. So the reason I bring that up is just because the Farmers Market, it's on a slope, the, the market. And so the stalls and the tables, they're all, like, they line up against that sidewalk in addition to the ones that you had shown before that are planning to be moved, but particularly on that left-hand side, it's not flat. And I think that's something I've heard from vendors, if there's any way to incorporate a design that allows for the spaces for the stalls to, to be flat, I think that would, that would be great. I wanted to add one other thing, just in general, when looking at the, the new ramp and the seating, I think it's great that you're thinking about how to activate the seating area. And I just, I think something I've appreciated with this park is having a play space right nearby. So I understand the need to move the play space, but I'm wondering if there's any option to add a play feature on the steps. And a couple, something that has inspired me recently is the Boston City Hall Playground. And what they've done is interspersed seating with slides and then they also have a climbing wall. And it's just really, it's, you can read the reviews online, but it's an excellent, excellent playground. And I think having something closer to the market and would benefit families visiting the market. And also, I know certainly as someone who's ridden the train with my kids, having something, you know, like, hey, we can play, play before the train comes. That would be excellent.
So I, I think, sorry to interrupt you. I believe this is about the de minimis. Have we already, I'm feeling Groundhog Day myself. Did we talk about the, the park concept before? Sorry, I was just trying to get back to the topic at hand before we, because it's, right?
I'm sure, Commissioner, Chair Thompson, Commissioner Alper, yes. And this action before you is about the de minimis. It's certainly helpful to hear comments about design, though in a project like this that is run by another agency, we won't actually ever approve a concept design. We will probably have future agreements coming forward around land use and potentially cooperative construction if that does happen as a part of this, if the park board brings money to do some other things such as walkway renovations at the same time. And I, so I hope that answers the question. I also do just want to clarify that the playground would stay in the immediate vicinity. It just needs to kind of move out of the way. It's, it's sort of pictured here, but it's a little bit faint. So I think the intent would still be to have, have play features, but I certainly take the comment of incorporating that with, with the stairways. I've made a note on that.
Yeah, and if, if I may respond to our committee chair.
Please.
Who's filling in for our Chair Forney tonight. I mean, I believe if we're looking at a de minimis concurrence, that it makes sense to, to look at some of the, the park features that are being moved. And so therefore, I think it warrants looking at some of the, the, how to make sure that there really is a de minimis impact via 4F. So that's why I brought those up, in addition to being a citizen of the area.
Perfectly valid. Yes, Commissioner Schaefer. I just had one question. If you could address what your plans are for runoff with this increased pavement?
Yes, Chair Thompson, Commissioners. So we are going through the regular stormwater processes for construction. I believe that, and this is not my area of expertise specifically, but I believe that this triggers like a larger stormwater review due to the amount of construction that we're doing here, both on the north and south side of Lake Street. So we will be going through the regular stormwater process here. I know that this area does have quite a bit of grade, this park. If you're, if you're at the back of this park, kind of closer to the parking lot, there's about 10 feet of grade dropping down to Lake Street. And we've had some issues with stormwater today running down and kind of towards the door of the south tower and some ice pooling and things like that. All of this because we're redesigning and regrading it and moving utilities will be able to address some of those stormwater issues that have been plaguing us a little bit. Thanks.
Seeing no other lights, a quick follow-up question. Is there any stormwater capture that Metro Transit is going to be considering in terms of cleaning things? Because I'm going to guess that immediately it's going to go to the Mississippi River after it goes in the drain.
Chair Thompson, that's a good question. I can ask more. I don't know that we're at that level of design yet, but I can ask about stormwater capture.
Thank you. And just one last question. This, this design, because I am genuinely, I mean, Director Alper said Groundhog Day and I'm like, did we do this before? This design is Metro Transit's design, correct? And it just moves some of our stuff?
That's correct.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for indulging my clarification, Commissioner Alper. Seeing no other lights, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries. Thank you. And at 7:08, I will declare the planning committee adjourned.
And that brings us back out of recess for the, to the full board and we're going to pick up where we left off. Where we, where we left off, I believe we were also talking to blue line related people? Welcome back up and we'll continue with the presentation.
All right. So when we were last here, I'm talking about the Blue Line Extension Lowry Avenue Station. I had just gone over a long list of details of how this concept comes together. Certainly we'll be here for questions. I want to now go to more three-dimensional I want to now go to more three-dimensional, ground-level perspective drawings that give a little bit more look and feel of what this concept could look like. So I've got about five of these, and we got a short little video that helps bring to life this a little bit more. So here we're looking towards West Broadway and the Light Rail. Those three bridges I spoke about earlier, you can see how the Grand Rounds Parkway and Trail go underneath all of that. So no gates, no roadway crossings, no intersections, just a clear, unobstructed path underneath Light Rail and West Broadway. Here we're on the east side of the park, and actually, this is actually in what would be new park space. So we're closer to Washburn, we're looking towards the hospital. You can see the Grand Round Park, the Grand Round Trail, and in the middle ground between the bridges where the train is, is where the station would be. So you can see what that grade and the pedestrian bike access to that would be. Here's a view from someone just got off the platform looking towards the hospital. That path going in the middle ground and background is going up to the closest door to the hospital. So we're underneath West Broadway, southbound bridge here. This is looking from the west side, looking northeast, the station is where you can see the blue and yellow train. Those are the West Broadway Bridges. In the foreground is an area where would be potentially more usable park space. The Parkway currently is in this general area. Okay, we got a little animation. See if this works. This is relatively short. I want to warn you. So it's relatively simple, but it does get, bring to life what the environment would be. Like, anyone want me to push play again? Okay, just to summarize really quickly, so Option A and Option H look a lot alike if you pull back and you squint, but in those circles are the big differences. In Option H, there's no grade crossings of the Parkway. Light Rail is on a bridge above the Parkway. The intersection of Lowry and West Broadway are now raised up again, above the Parkway and Light Rail, allowing free access of the Parkway and a new intersection for Lowry for an unimpeded access to the hospital.
So to summarize our next steps, we are currently in a phase of seeking direction on the design from our project leadership with the Project Decision Board. So our next steps, we are interested in this body's input and opinions on the design options presented here. Our next step after that is a corridor management committee meeting for the Blue Line Extension Project on February 13th, where this will be a discussion item. Then the following week, there is a meeting of the Project Decision Board, which is made up of Met Council and Hennepin County policymakers on February 19th to, to reach some direction around design concepts. The nine options that we've talked through are at very early concept level, so we are looking for that direction on which, which of those concepts want to develop further into the design. And of course, as we work through those design details, we will continue the engagement process with stakeholders and the public. So what you see reflected in the designs here are not, you know, the final design. Of course, we will, we will look to continue coordination with MPRB and staff related to the design within, within the park. Our next steps after that is to continue to the Section 4F process. We anticipate that we would be coming before you, seeking Section 4F concurrence as it relates to that design concept that, that advances. We have future steps ahead of us on that front that want to include potential mitigations. So those, those potential mitigations are listed out here, things that we see as being on the table for discussion, depending on the, the option that advances. So could include things such as transfer of free property, adding more parkland and/or modifying what's out there today so that the parkland within the transportation easement is more usable, how transportation infrastructure, you know, gets moved around, potentially reducing the footprint of the transportation easement in the park to unencumber parkland. And we're open to other mitigation ideas as well. So those, those mitigations want to be part of our next steps on the Section 4F process. And also just want to acknowledge that we do have future steps ahead of us related to Section 106 consultation, as it relates to the Grand Rounds Historic District as well. And MPRB is a consulting party as part of that process as well. So that reaches the end of our presentation. We have lots of material here, if you have particular questions or design options that you want to see in more detail, but that is the, the end of our, our formal presentation here. Thank you.
Thank you for that. You know, before I ask my colleagues about questions, I was asked by one of our Commissioners, Meg Forni, to read something that she'd written here, and I'm just going to do that now. I think then the conversation can have its own context, because this is, doesn't line up with the context of the conversation. But this is, this is from Meg Forni. "When part of a group is excluded from making decisions about their property, all sorts of hard little problems arise. I was on the front line of the, of the Southwest Light Rail Formation. It was a train wreck on the areas adjacent to parklands and bodies of water because the powers never had regarded the voice of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board until after major decisions like municipal consent was granted and funding was basically allocated. I was the park appointee, appointed designee when the Blue Line Extension was to go through Theater Worth with two stations for our dear's convenience, I guess. In spite of that previous proposed hemorrhage route, Metro Transit had learned from the last minute thereby extremely costly engagement of the Park Board to bring us, the Park Board, to the table from the beginning of the process. With Director Adam Arvidson and my engagement, my engaged involvement, critical connections were addressed and developed and absurd ones discarded. We not only had a seat at the table, but our unique perspectives were heard and acted upon, such as the consideration of a roundabout at Golden Valley Road with, and Worth Parkway. Roundabouts are a great tool for seamless automobile traffic, but a true accident waiting to happen for any flow of pedestrians or bicyclists. The same experience has been true for this version of the Blue Line Extension. We have been heard while having a seat at the Oversight Committee, the Metro Blue Line Extension Corridor Management Committee was also at the professional staff table. The critical part is that all parties understand what MPRB's jurisdiction and focuses, both 4F, Environmental Review, and Section 106 impacts on historic assets. Our comment letter on the supplemental draft environmental impact statement for the Blue Line Extension Light Rail Transit Project of July 2024 challenged project staff to solve issues in Design A. Proposition H addresses the concerns of our commitment, comment letter and actually restores the seamless flow flowing Parkway with enhanced pedestrian and bike connections. I'm grateful to project staff in actually hearing our concerns and creating a design that addresses them. I'm also grateful to Director Arvidson for encouraging and challenging project staff in advocating for our concerns. It's a gift to be present at the table. Those were comments by Commissioner Meg Forni." With that, I will call on Commissioner Rucker.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Option H looks like the best option. You know, with me for coming from the first responder as a firefighter, access to North Memorial, the crossbars, arms, you know, whatever you want to call it, you know, that would be, you know, an option that I was against in the first place with Option A. As a former Metro Transit driver for 12 years, I drove the 14 from Bloomington, 54th from Bloomington through downtown Washington to Broadway, Broadway to West Broadway to New Hope, New Hope all the way out to Brooklyn Park. The question I have, I know we're, we're at the point right now with Light Rail, was there any discussions that have like a A, B, C, D line with limited stops at all, using the 60-foot articulated buses that hold 55 to 60 people?
So President Abeney Commissioners, this project had developed many, many years ago, and a turn of analysis study was done that looks at different modes. So back, I don't know, 10, maybe more plus years ago, Light Rail was chosen as that mode. And as it's, we've heard Commissioner Forni's letter talking about the previous iteration of this project, it has been that mode consistently, and that's where we are today with, with Light Rail.
Okay. And so on this line, how many cars are going to be connected together?
Oh, sure. President Abeney Commissioners, so the operation of the Light Rail system is, is consistent. So right now, you will see Metro Transit running two-car trains and three-car trains. We went down to two-car trains sometime last year to help with operator shortage and also some public safety measures. So this line is projected to have probably both two-car and three-car trains. We're still out many years from actual operations, so as, as conditions warrant, we will operate as we need to provide that ridership.
Okay. So how well is the A, B, C lines working right now with the ridership?
That's not something I have front of mind. I know our ridership over year after year is increasing from coming out of the pandemic. I believe our ABRT system or our A-line, our C-line, D-line are some of our most heavily used lines in the system. We can follow up with more details if you'd like that.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Thompson? Thank you, President Forni. I have a lot of questions. President Abeney, did I really say it? I apologize. I'm used to calling her Veep. That's my problem. President Abeney, thank you, thank you. Okay. So as you likely know, I'm the district commissioner, and I've been very hands-on in this space. I have a question that I can't seem to get a straight answer from in the many times I've asked it. Why must the Lowry stop be in Minneapolis? Why can't it literally just be like 20 yards down the line by the gigantic parking ramp of North Memorial where everybody seems to agree it should go? Everybody in my neighborhood, every one of my constituents. I mean, that's not even A through H, it's not on the table. They're all in Minneapolis. I don't understand it. Can somebody please answer that for me?
President Abeney Commissioners, we studied many different locations for this station, more than what the nine that we brought here over the course of the project. Through engagement with the different cities, Cities of Robbinsdale, City of Minneapolis, public outreach, we looked at doing two stations like was brought up, that basically doubles our cost for this area. So it became pretty clear that one station at this location centrally serves the most people with the most efficient use of, of Light Rail resources.
Right, but I'm saying it centrally serves the most people down by that parking ramp, and I don't understand why it's, why it's being put on parkland. Like, it's literally like a jurisdictional, like penny pinching. It's like, it's insistent that it's in Minneapolis. I'm not saying two stations, I'm saying one in Robbinsdale. Why are we not discussing that?
I guess I would go back to what I said. It seems as if, looking at our ridership numbers and how people come to the station, that having it in this location gains the most riders.
Can you, can someone from Metro Transit email me that data? I would love the data points that you guys are using for that calculus.
President Abeney Commissioners, yes, we can, we can bring.
That's my first question. Thank you. My second question, why is every project B through H compared to A? Why is A being used as like the standard for comparison?
President Abeney Commissioners, Option A, the nomenclature of the lettering doesn't really have any particular meaning other than Option A was what we started with in this exercise with the design reflected in the SDEIS and municipal consent iteration of the plans. So A doesn't have any, the lettering doesn't have any bearing beyond that.
No, I, I get that too, the lettering. I just mean in every single plan iteration, it had like a green, a yellow, and a red of like, like, is it worse than A, is it better than A? That's why I was just, so that seemed, I inferred that that was like meant to be the one that we're talking about. And then fi, third question, well, I have many others, but my main third question would be, can we get a presentation on Option D? Do you, do you have any materials on Option D?
Yes, President Abeney Commissioners, yes.
Thank you.
I'll look at the screen for a second, I gotta get, here we go. Okay. So north is kind of that way. To you. So you can see the 300-foot swath of parkland going lower right to upper left. Grounds in the colors, orange are bridges, white are sidewalks, yellow is the Light Rail platform, gray are roads. I guess I got it all there. So this option, and there's a D2 as well, this is D1, has the Light Rail platform at the level of the West Broadway Bridges, which means it's about a story above the Parkway, it's a story above Lowry Avenue. So on the left side of the platform, the yellow skinny long rectangle, that's up at that roadway level. The right side, because the ground slopes away, is at grade, so there are sidewalks that you can see in white that connect to that southern end of the platform. So this option would likely require stairs and elevators, just better serve the hospital closer to the yellow, or sorry, the orange bridges there. What you see here also is, West Broadway is somewhat similar to the other options where the northbound lanes are split the station with the southbound lanes. So you've got a station up at West Broadway level between the bridges with really one good access point. So it really brings the station up away from the everyday use, so it's a little more isolating like the east, the, sorry, west, no, East Lake Street Station we just, we just looked at. That station's fully above ground. We really prefer stations to be fully at grade to provide those additional eyes, eyes on the platform, general people who aren't maybe using the train walk past to provide that additional activity. D2, very similar, except for the roadway is all on the west side, so the top of this drawing. This option, because the roadway's only on one side of the tracks, provides complications with the intersections that are just cut off of this plan. So at the station location, the Light Rail we call side running, so it's all fully on one side of, like Hayawatha, Blue Line, it's fully on one side of the road. But it needs to get to the center of the road going either direction. So then we have this diagonal crossing of Light Rail through the intersection. We really can't make that work safely in this case. It's hard to explain because you can't see on this plan. So again, this, this station is up above Lowry and, actually, in this option, it's actually right above the Parkway. If you can see the Parkway sneak through there in its original alignment.
I was going to say, talk about the park effects.
Park effects, yeah, we're at the park. So there, and then that swooping orange line, that's, that would be a pedestrian bridge that's really squarely right in the middle of the park there as well.
This map gives the perfect for everybody to see of what I mean. It says right there, North Memorial Hospital, and then West Broadway, just to the left of the orange, a couple more clicks, is exactly the area where the station would be perfect. And this is what I don't understand, and I've had, I've asked this question so many times, so many times. Thank you. Do you, you don't have any other renderings of this particular one?
I'm sorry, no.
I, I, I will, I will, I would like to add, my, my challenge with H is that it cuts off the drive from North Memorial. And I will just say this, this is anecdotal, but it's also 100% true. My father had a massive incident 10 years ago, and he would be dead were it not for that connection point, and I'm totally serious. He was within seconds of being dead. So, and he's still alive. So I know that there are. So I know that there are people who rely on the drive as a through line, and cutting off access to the hospital is challenging for me to get behind. I would, as the district commissioner, this is my preferred concept plan, thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, I had a question around where you anticipate the fifty million more for this particular design to come from, and the other second question is, you mentioned that the light rail was, direction was chosen ten years ago. Was there a serious relook at Rapid Bus since that decision was made?
President Abeney Commissioners, I'll ask this, answer the second question first.
Sure.
So when this project shifted alignment off of the freight rail corridor, within the Federal Transit Administration project program, it was deemed a shift in alignment and not mode, so we didn't go back to further analysis of that, what a project would do when they start a project, so it always remained L R T in the federal project and, and what Hennepin County and Metro Transit were advancing.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I forgot your first question.
The, the extra fifty million for option H?
Sure, so this project is funded, both, it's in a, in a federal program, it's called the New Starts Program, it's funded by the FTA and by local funding sources, so in this case, it's Hennepin County and the Federal Transit Administration. So that, that added cost would be part of the project cost.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate that, and we've had a recent, right, a transportation tax that we all have, has gone into effect that probably helped that, but I guess I'm just, you know, I think there is a point where we need to look at what is the use case that the residents most need at this point in time, and if it was a rail ten years ago, and we don't look at it just because that's the boundaries of the project, I don't know if that's the best way to respond to our residents, that's my only thinking, is we've seen a lot happen in ten years, and I think things will continue to be fiscally tight, and we need to really be rethinking, you know, great, it was a great opportunity for some, for some funding, but I'm not sure that the community would choose that this point in time.
Commissioner Elber?
Yeah, thanks, first of all, I would just like to respond to a comment in Commissioner Abeney's. Who is everybody anyway? In Commissioner Fornie's statement about roundabouts, and the statement about roundabouts being unsafe for pedestrians and bicyclists is absolutely untrue. You look online at F H W A, and it is a proven safety strategy to build roundabouts, so I just wanna, I wanna say that they, they, they're less conflict, lower speed, shorter setback crossings, they reduce the risk of pedestrian crashes by sixty to seventy percent, so that is, that is completely false, this, that statement in there. Speaking to the matter at hand, thank you, I just want to say that the project office really has taken a hard look based on our comment letter, and so I want to express my gratitude for that, it was robust, it was thorough, took, took the concerns that we articulated in the letter, okay, I don't, you don't, don't quote me, but I'm, I guess I'm, I'm being quoted here, I, but we did not say move it next to North Memorial, no, we said, look at a tunnel, we said, look at these other options, we articulated those concerns, and those concerns have been addressed through, through the design options that we see before us in these nine other concept designs. So I just want to, you know, let you all know that, as you hopefully already know, that state and municipal consent, that process is complete, so, you know, that this info is, is coming back at, at our request, and that our concerns were taken seriously, the concerns that we articulated in the letter were taken seriously. So I just want to, I'm, I want to look at them in a bit more depth, but I know that the concepts that we're seeing is not the final design, and there's, there's going to be a lot of opportunity to refine that, you know, the, the environment for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for drivers, and I know that there will be time to further get into the details, but I think fundamentally, I would concur in, with, with Commissioner Rucker, that I think H, it has good bones, it, it will ensure our park system remains the best in our country, and I think that would, would be a station design that I would be proud to show my kids or my grandkids, and so I just want to say thank you for responding to our, our request.
Vice President Musich?
Thank you, President Abeney, I'm gonna keep my comments short, I too just want to express my thanks for taking the comments that we submitted to heart and finding a way to incorporate them in, in the design that we're seeing for concept H. I too am interested in seeing how it matures over time and increased development of that plan, it does, it looks like it's going in a direction that the park board, at least as it's currently constituted, would be able to support, so thank you for taking the time to look into that and examine it and provide us with that new design.
Thank you, I wonder if you could go back to the, the D, one of the Ds that you had?
Don't look at the screen.
Don't look at the screen. And, and so comparing this, the yellow box here to the yellow box in H, are they pretty much almost in the same location, or?
So in, in.
The station, I guess I should say.
President Abeney Commissioners, so the station in, the two D options are farther into Minneapolis.
Okay.
The, the option H station is essentially where the orange bridges in this option.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay. And, and I, I, I would agree, I think that the, the letter has been acknowledged here, I'm, I'm excited to see a concept that really uses the space between the Broadway bridges and gets it as close to the hospital as possible. One thing I do have some concerns about, a couple things, one is the rendering you had of the landing, you know, where you get off and you have to sort of walk up to the behemoth that is the hospital, really, I think one thing that we maybe sometimes don't do so well in the Twin Cities, respectfully, I worked on the Green Line and I worked a little bit on the old Blue Line when I worked for Hennepin County, but is, is putting the stations really where there's a lot of foot traffic, and I, I do actually really worry about that, there's a, the, for the Southwest L R T, I believe that's a station that's emerged, I'm not over there much, but I unfortunately was near the impound lot recently, oh, because my son's car was impounded, but anyway, but I think that's a station there, and who is, I don't even know who's going to use that station, I mean, so I, I always think that, you know, sometimes we're, you know, trying to figure out costs and all of that, but really we have to think about that ongoing service, the ongoing use of the thing that we're investing a lot of money in, if that's really where the traffic is. Then the last comment I'll make, I think is the last comment, but I work at the university, so I worked on the Green Line project quite a bit, and we have an, a, a maintenance agreement, an, an operations agreement with Metro Transit and all the partners that are on the Washington corridor through the campus, but there's issues with the maintenance that's required from the traffic on and off, and this is really quite adjacent to parkland, there'll be a lot more litter and debris that blows into the parks that then would be upon, on our, our teams to, to provide a level of service and care that we don't have to provide there currently, presumably. So I think just giving some thought to how, how the ongoing, just sort of day-to-day maintenance and operations impacts might, might be for the park board and what that looks like, or if Metro Transit or other partners are willing to have a higher level of service than they typically might for something like that, because this is a really important space, this is a really important park space for our community. So, that's it, other comments? Okay, well, thank you, and thank you for staying for our other diversion, and with that we'll move to, we have another discussion item, I believe we do.
ADA Transition and Action.
Yes, it's the, thank you, it's the, there's so many notes on here, ADA Transition and Action Plan Update, and that is Jill Mo? Here she comes.
They've already been handed out the, there, okay, thank you. All right. President Abeney?
Yes, welcome, please introduce yourself, I'm not sure that I've met you or?
Yes, I, I definitely will, so my name is Jill Mo, and I'm the ADA Administrator for the Park Board, I've completed my first year.
Can you speak toward the microphone, is that what you said?
Oh, I am so sorry.
You're good, you're good.
I have completed my first year here at the Park Board, I was hired in November of twenty twenty-four, or twenty twenty-three. I have over thirty-five years of experience in the arenas of vocational, recreational, and educational, working with folks with disabilities. So I am thrilled to be a part of the Park Board, I have spent a year or so learning about our, our systems, and I look forward to presenting the plan, and, and so, yes. All right, wait, I gotta do it this way, so sorry. So ADA is a, is a civil rights law, so it is probably one of the, the major laws that really focus on what does equity and inclusion mean in the realm of working with folks with the lived experience of disability. Wait, I'm gonna do it this way. All right, so in twenty, twenty fifteen, the Park Board commissioned an ADA audit of the complete park system. And so all of the initiatives that I'm going to be talking about stem from that twenty fifteen audit. Over the past several years, and it is clear even from the meeting, this meeting tonight, that accessibility and all of the work that we are doing is thoroughly embedded into the park plans and the work that we are doing. This action plan is probably more about, let's broaden out that systemic look at how do we infuse ADA into our daily work to make sure that we are continually improving access for folks with disabilities. Our planning group has been amazing, but also Allison Deline, who kind of took, took on that lead role over the past several years on improving our bathrooms, improving our kitchens in our rec centers, as well as the entrances, has made a, a very large impact on how our constituents can, can enjoy the parks within the, you know, within the rec centers. Peter Hama, who's also here, whoop, there he is, so Peter has also worked diligently over the last year in turning that transition plan that was created from the twenty fifteen audit into a more dynamic kind of user-friendly application versus the static spreadsheet that we've been working from. So we look forward to that, however, so we're leveraging data tools, we're leveraging the work that we're already doing, and that we're just kind of keep pushing that forward as we, as we continue on this trajectory of accessibility at M P R B. So, very much so, this, this action plan is aligned with the Parks for All Comprehensive Plan, all of these goals and the strategic directions are, are infused, so when we look at the work that we're doing with Parks for All, ADA is all over that, when you take it from, when you look at it from the ADA lens, some folks may look at it and see a completely different plan, when I look at our Parks for All Plan, I see ADA all over it, and that's, it's, it's a testament to the work that's been done. All right, our organizational structure, so right now, I'm under Jennifer Ringold in the Deputy Superintendent's Office, I focus on Title Two, the Human Resources Department focuses on Title One, so all I do is, not all, but what I'm working on is state and local government, so everything that's around government services is all under Title Two, and that's my focus area. We've, we've established an accessibility management team that is interdisciplinary, and then I also focus on the coordination of the ADA Transition Plan, which is the physical aspects of the park, physical infrastructure, and then the action plan, which is about everything else, including the physical infrastructure. I also work on any complaints that come in regarding accessibility and access, those complaints go to me, and I manage the, the process under Deputy Superintendent Ringold's direction. Okay, so I'm gonna keep going here, because I want Peter to be able to show the dynamic dashboard that we have. The other thing I want to acknowledge is that we have our therapeutic rec and inclusion team here, they are another big aspect of what we do under ADA, so I'd like to have the folks stand up, Sarah, her, her flasky, Dylan, and Mary, they are an integral part of the work that we are doing. This team works on the accommodations and modifications for folks that have requested that, but they also go even deeper into how do we think about programming, how do we think about inclusion when we talk about the activities and the services we provide here at the Park, Park Board? Okay, so this is truly a systems framework for ADA compliance. So there is one question that caught my eye in the Parks, Parks for All Plan, and it was how accessible are, are our parks? And so to answer this question, this is, the, the plan is what will help us answer this question. And so we have six infrastructure areas, we have four level of service areas, eleven actions, and about forty-four tasks over the next two years that we want to achieve to continue, to continue to push forward the ADA compliance. All right, so under the ADA, we took some time and we really talked about and thought about the breadth and the depth of ADA, and really what it comes down to is the physical, the program, the physical infrastructure, the program infrastructure, effective communication, emergency management, training and awareness, monitoring and evaluation, those are the major components of ADA, and that's what we focus on within this plan. So like under the physical component, we're going to be looking at addressing accessible route issues, and that is, when you think about an accessible route, you think about from parking lot to the amenity in the park, from the mass transit stop to the amenities in the park, from folks who are walking, you know, to the park, and then also folks that are being parking or dropped off, drop up, drop off, so, so all of those, it's how do we make sure that we have at least one accessible route leading to all of those features within the parks that we have? For program, it's really about applying the program access standard, and that is, whatever we are providing, we have to make sure that we have an equitable, equitable opportunity for folks with disabilities as well. Effective communication is definitely looking at how do we provide information, emergency management, of course, is public, you know, public safety and what happens in the situations of emergencies and egress routes. Training and awareness is making sure our staff are well aware and understand how do we apply ADA within the work that they do on a daily basis, and then how do we measure how we're doing? For level of service, there's a, four areas of levels, levels of service that we're focusing on, the geographic level of service is very similar to what we do under race and equity, is where are services, where are amenities, and are they equitably distributed, the accessible components, are they equitably, equitably distributed across our park system? Peter's gonna talk about the work that he's doing to really help us define that geographic dispersion of accessible features, buildings, things like that. We're also looking at community engagement, how do we, how do we make sure that we are How do we, how do we make sure that we are engaging folks with the lived experience of disability to ensure that we're hearing their needs and not assuming that we know? And the typical line within the disability community is nothing about us without us. So it's really kind of zoning in on that concept. For recreation and programming, it's all about making sure, once again, that we're meeting the Program Access Standard. And then maintenance of accessible features, making sure ADA mandates that we have accessible features, that they are in operable condition, and that we're always making sure that if there is something that breaks down, that we're repairing it, replacing it, whatever the case may be. So Peter is going to talk about the updated Transition Plan Dashboard. And then from, springing from that will be the work that we will be doing to develop a community dashboard of accessible features. This will allow folks to plan and know before they go so that they understand, you know, I want to go have a picnic in this park, but my grandparents are coming with me and they use walkers or wheelchairs or whatever the case may be. Can I do that at that park? So that's the work that we'll also be working on, which will stem from the work that Peter's doing right now with the Transition Plan. Okay. And the big, the big, the big news in the room is that the Department of Justice has passed a new ADA rule for Title II agencies, which is us, all around effective communication and digital access. Clearly, our websites and our digital platforms are the gateway, the digital gateway for folks to learn about what we do, who we are, and all of those fantastic things that are going on in the park system. The digital gateway, right? So what we do know is that most of our constituents are using their lovely smartphones to find out information. We want to make sure that we're doing what we can to make sure that our information is responsive, that it's accessible with assistive technology and all of those things. So that is going to be a big focus of the work that we're also going to be doing in 2025, 2026. Because in April of 2026, that's the Department of Justice's compliance date for Title II agencies like our Park Board. All right. Peter.
Hi. Peter Hama with the Data Insights Team. Thank you for having me today, President Abiné. What I'm gonna show you today is a working document, and it's gonna just be screenshots for it because it's very much in flux and development, constantly changing, and has been widely affected by our problems with our data and our, some of our maps and our data. So we had, the original audit had about 15,000 lines on it. It's about 10 years old and a lot has changed in our system since then. So what you're gonna see is that we took that and got it down to 5,482 lines. It was done by a contractor who had five descriptions for a door in one place. It was not wide enough, the handle didn't work, it didn't swing open far enough. And then another person would do an inspection on a door in a different building and say, the door doesn't work. So we narrowed this down and, so that we could use, so it would be usable, so it was all understandable. And as you can see here, we put it into the top part, which is what does the audit tell us are the main assets? And then in the bottom, how do those fit into our major categories, our five major assets that also reflect in our equity metrics? And you'll see "other" is the largest one. And as we break that down a little bit further, we're peeling the onion back, most of the "other" is accessible entrances and accessible routes, interior and exterior accessibility pathways. Now, as you'll see here, it looks like we only have 901 resolved items since the audit. But if you think of it as paint by numbers, we know what we know. We have very good data about some assets. You're gonna see examples of pools and playgrounds here today. So we know that that data is pretty good. And that data, as you'll see, looks a lot better and like we've accomplished a lot more. We are working and building a plan to fill in those gaps on all those other data points. So if we can break this down by what exact asset type has been resolved since the audit, and as we continue to refine this, we'll be able to use this to fill in the gaps of what is accessible and what isn't through inspections, through talking to people who are on the ground, through our Trades Department, and through asset management. So let's look at pools. Pools is 42.73% items resolved since audit, resulting in 31 fully accessible pools. We have 65 total. And as you can see, we, this is gonna be a usable tool for both our planning, our rehab program, and our asset management to be able to look at and say, okay, autobahn, what's not resolved there? Armitage, oh, that's great, that's resolved. So we'll be able to decide how and where we spend the money. And when we are starting a new program or having a new rehab project at a park that we have clearly identified, we could give project managers a list of all the known, as of 10 years ago, known ADA problems so that they can incorporate the resolutions into that moving forward. So this is something that is dynamic. You're just seeing screenshots today just for ease of the presentation, but I can answer more questions in depth at a different time. You'd be able to do something like click resolved since audit. You'd be able to see all the items in the top right there, the detailed descriptions of what, what that means, what did we do? And this is, there's a lot of data that's underneath this, that's comments from the people who did the audit. And then you'll be able to see that we can get pictures of, as you see here, Highview Park, and this is just me superimposing it over our dashboard, but you'll be able to see that what has been fixed and how it looks. So we could build this into a future tool, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, for the public to be able to use. So what does an example of some unresolved pools look like? As you can see here, Pershing Park is unresolved because it doesn't have an accessible entry point and it doesn't have an ADA compliant sloped entry. So that would require, while the pool is in relatively good shape, would require adjustments to make it ADA accessible. And then we could use this as a framework to decide what is, as the same way we have a proper walk shed for what kind of assets and amenities are available to people, we could do a drive shed or a regional distribution of how many of these assets need to be available for people to be able to go to that are ADA accessible. And Jill would be leading, Jill and maybe the executive team would be leading on what they exactly want to provide as a service and at what cost. So another item that, another asset that we have very good data on is playgrounds. As you'll see here, again, 48.64% of our items have been resolved, 36 accessible play areas. The ones there in green, the red are unresolved. And now, we don't know that every one of those that is listed as unresolved is indeed unresolved. What we do know is that everything that is resolved is. So everything that's unresolved would need to be going through a process that we're hoping to do soon and in the summer and is currently underway in some asset areas to be able to fill in those gaps. Think of it as a paint by numbers, we're filling it. We know that we have red, we know we have blue, but we've got to get the other colors onto the map. And then as we continue to refine it, it'll paint a fuller picture and it'll become a better tool for us. So we've already spoken to a little bit of what's next. We're looking at routes, drinking fountains, benches, our other, the rest of our five major assets. We're gonna look at forward-moving data. You'll also maybe hear from me in the future about asset longevity. We're working on projects to figure out how to meet that budget goal and what is already in the, in the pipe to get fixed and resolved through rehab and capital planning. We're doing the same kind of process here for ADA, identifying everything that's gonna be resolved that's already in the CIP, that's already in rehab, and then finding out what the gaps are gonna be so that if we need to spend more money, we'd know where to do it. And then hopefully after we have all this done, we, and we can create a public-using dashboard so that they can know before you go. I'd like to go to a park with a pool and a restroom and a picnic area that are all ADA accessible, click those couple things, see where you're gonna go. That's the vision. We have a couple of good examples. I'm not gonna be going into them today, but I'd be happy to follow up in the future.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm gonna go to Vice President Musich.
I will defer to Commissioner Olson. He was faster on the button draw than me.
Thank you for that. Do we include accessibility to our beaches in this? And if so, what defines an accessible beach? Is it just being able to get up to the sand or is it able to get through the sand to the water? I ask because I had a conversation with a constituent who was mentioning how we don't really have accessible beaches. And, you know, he asked, specifically requested that we look into getting, he mentioned Barcelona and actually visited Barcelona, I saw these, and they have these kind of mats, textured mats that people can roll right up to the water. So is that something that is, will be, we're looking at, will be within this plan as well?
Sure. President Abiné and Commissioner Olson. So the beautiful part is we were just talking about beaches this week and the different types of mats that are available. We would want to look at doing some proof of concepts of how do we maintain those, how do we get those mats out there so that, yes, you can go from a pathway, oops, you can go from a pathway to, through the sand, right to the water. And then also looking at the sand wheelchairs that are also available that we could have for people to check out. Because if you're using, you know, an electric wheelchair that's heavier, you don't want that in the water. So there's lots of different ways, and this is where Sarah's team also comes into play, is how do we, how do we, how do we create that accessible experience on our beaches for, you know, for our constituents? So yes, that is definitely something that we have been talking about and looking at. We look forward to continuing and updating. And if that constituent would like to reach out and speak with me, I'm happy to talk with them about what their needs are and how do we, how do we help them get what they need.
Great, thank you. That's lovely. I love that y'all are talking about that. I mean, I really do think that this work is, you know, perhaps the most, some of the most important that we're doing within the Park Board.
Absolutely.
You know, if we're not accessible to everyone, what's the point? So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Abiné. On that topic, I thought we had beach wheelchairs at a number of the beaches. Did we discontinue that service or are they currently available?
Sure. So President Abiné and Vice President Musich. Yes. So Nakomas has the beach chairs that are available too, and I believe Theodore Worth does as well. So Theodore Worth and Nakomas are the two lakes that have probably the most accessible features available. But we are also looking at the other beaches as well.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear we did not roll that back.
No, 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 no.
Because I know we were very excited when we debuted them a number of years ago.
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. So you had mentioned, a couple slides into your presentation, that we have a lot of things planned for the next two years. How much of what is encompassed in that work is already contained in the budget that this board adopted last year?
President Abiné and Vice President Musich. So the beautiful part about the work that we're doing right now is really about systematizing how we infuse ADA into every work, all the work that we do. When we're talking about actual build plans and things like that, we are working with our planning department on how do we make sure that ADA strategies are also taking place? We are working with our manage, I am drawing, Asset Management Team? Yes. So we are working with Environmental Services or Environmental Stewardship on anything that they are working on will draw attention to. So I guess, long story short, we're gonna try and use the resources that are currently available without having to stretch a budget that is already stretched, but also maintaining ADA compliance. I think the biggest component of the work that we're going to be doing is really around training and awareness and really helping staff and our leadership and everybody understand where does ADA come into play at our Park Board? And it comes into play every day, no matter what we're doing. We're always, you know, but I think it's also about making sure that everybody understands their role in ADA compliance and how do we help them maintain that compliance?
Wonderful. At the current rate of implementation of plan elements, how many years do you anticipate it's going to take for us to fully implement the action plan that's been, that's been provided to us this evening?
So this is a two-year plan. So, so the, the actions and then the tasks will be achieved within the next two years. And then as the board creates the new implementation plan for the next four years under Parks for All, we will work in tandem with, not separate from. The biggest thing about ADA is we don't want to be adjacent to, we want to be mixed within. So, so we will work with executive leadership and with the board so that we make sure that we're in step with whatever else that we need to be doing under ADA compliance and that we're thinking about ADA as we're developing the implementation plan.
Fantastic.
Among many other things that we have to think about.
Okay. Then my last question is in regards to the dashboard. So I love dashboards, they're great. It's a fantastic tool. Is all the information that's being made available through the dashboard also a GIS layer that gets applied across the organization to our GIS tool so that when planning is looking at GIS to start talking about figuring out what they want to do in a park to implement a master plan, that they see, okay, we've got these items within this park that have ADA audit issues that we should be thinking about trying to address as we implement this plan or that maintenance might be looking at as they're going in to make a repair somewhere?
Yeah. So thank you for that question, President Abiné and Commissioner Musich. Right now, the original audit was a 15,000-line Excel document. And we have gotten it down to a 5,400-line Excel document. And we, at the same time, have almost all of our assets into the GIS. And as we are refining this, and one of the ways of which we're going to be redoing our inspections will be through the GIS. And so we will be labeling of the things that we already know, there's gonna be a column across the board that is ADA accessible or not on all of these. And so once we've, we've had to figure out how to corral these 15,000 lines of cats and try and understand it in a way that would be usable to everybody. And then we're gonna, part of this refining process is to merge that data into the GIS and then eventually do away or just have it as a reference point but not be the guiding document. I think we're still a little bit ways away from that. Right now, what we're doing is we're matching the asset to the asset ID number that's in the GIS so that we know that within this dashboard, we're talking about this pool, that pool also exists, we have a yes, a single yes/no column, but also it can be referenced back to through this dashboard, or you could go back to the source data, that would just take a lot more time. But that's how we get this audit item detail and the map. The map is connecting the two pieces of data so that you'll be able to look at it on a map and still be able, through this dashboard, to be able to see what all of the items. And I chose this location name and first build date groups and the details. I could add more or fewer things. It'll all depend on what the project planners or asset management or the leadership team wants to know about those asset types, and we can add and remove information. So that's why it's still, it's a working document. It's not really gonna be public for quite a while.
Okay. Thank you for doing all that work to incorporate this in a way that makes it actually usable for the team, the teams that are trying to implement it. That's fantastic to hear that we're on the path, if not fully there yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to comment, I think I'm the last speaker. This is, this is very good and I look forward to the more public-facing work. Also, I hope that the public knows that we have people that will also connect, you know, to accommodate in our parks and the programs and the facilities and help us identify things as well. I have heard a little bit here and there, but not much. So I think, you know, I think that the parks are considered to be pretty good. I'll also add this, I, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, the additional money we worked with the city to get on our parkway paving means that they'll be, they'll be paving our parkways more rapidly. means that they'll be, they'll be paving our parkways more rapidly and doing the curb ramp upgrades ahead of the paving as part of that. So I know that they assessed, I believe, Lake Harriet Parkway this last summer. And then you'll see those upgrades, I would imagine, all of them that need to be done next summer. And then the paving will follow the two following years. So that's work that we're not leading or directing per se, but we're benefiting from in our park system, yes. I think you want to say something about.
Yes. I just wanted to let you know that we are very much on this. We have the GIS layer from the city of what had, the curb ramps are managed by the city. We have what has been done, what is known to be a problem. And actually, they're forward-facing the next three, two years, what they're planning to do. And that's going to be part of the, the asset type that's going to be these accessible routes.
Oh, good.
These exterior accessible routes as we integrate that data and look at, because you have to get from the curb ramp through our path that we own. Both things have to be good for it to be, go from a no to a yes.
Sure.
And the, is it accessible? But we have all that in the project plan already.
Awesome.
That's great to note.
Yeah, that's awesome. So another good reason why that we're accelerating our paving with the city secretary Ringold. I'm, I'm done.
I just wanted to simply say thank you for the time with Jill here tonight. She has come on. I should have actually, I didn't realize she hadn't been here before. Otherwise, I would have done the introduction. Of all of the staff who I've met and come into the organization, Jill holds kind of the gold medal of learning the organization and trying to fit the work into what the organization does. And so, you know, some areas that's been real quick and easy because they've already got a lot of accessibility stuff. They do. In other areas, it's kind of a learning experience. And so we're, so we're working through that. But integrating into the comp plan, integrating into the existing performance goals, all of those things have been a high priority and it's been a joy to watch. So thank you for taking some time with her tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, with that, I think, let me double-check here. Okay, we're through, we're through the items, but we will now move to petitions and communications. And I would like to start with Commissioner Olson.
Pass.
Commissioner Rucker.
Pass. Oh, actually, sorry. Some news.
Commissioner Olson has rethought it and he would like to go.
So just some updates for our legislative team. The Republicans and the Democrats have come to an agreement and we will be legislating very soon. And so hopefully, if we can come to an agreement over all of this, maybe we can get some bonding. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Commissioner Rucker, I believe you passed?
Yep.
Okay, and we'll move to Commissioner Alper.
Pass.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I just wanted to point out that we had a win around our metro transit bus stop at Benet McCoska and Richfield Road. And one of the things that we passed was an amendment to just delay the approval of that bus stop so that we could talk about stormwater runoff and also the, you know, light pollution as far as the boards. And, you know, this recent Star Tribune article directly attributes the Park Board for this initiative. And it says now in this article that they have about 270 of these, and it's saving them electricity. It's really exciting to me. So I just want to say congratulations to everyone here. And, and that we should keep this in mind as we think of these infrastructure projects around Market Square or around the Blue Line, that really, when infrastructure projects touch our parkland, we should be the ones to really think about some of those, those issues. And in this case, it ended up being a win-win for both parties. So I just wanted to say thank you to staff, you know, for bringing forward the Second Amendment that really detailed a lot of what we were looking for and that you heard from commissioners in that first pause. So I, I just wanted to highlight that tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Mens.
Thank you, President Abeni. I'm getting used to it. I said it right. I'd just like to reiterate some of the, some of the voices that we heard today around the centralized registration issue. I've been hearing from, from many different constituents. And as, as a person who works with young people, I, I hope that the words that were shared earlier tonight were very, were very powerful to me as someone who knows that it is a relationship that we have with young people in order to get them to do the things that we know would be good for them. That it is not as easy as opening up and saying, let's all register. It's a relationship to get kids there. And, and I think that the community is not responding necessarily to the process of registering. I think it's the lack of input that they were asked for. And I think that even Commissioner Forney's letter around when we're included, when we are excluded from discussions or where decisions might be made, that is where the, the pain and the discomfort and the, the damage that that does. And I think we have some repair work to do on that. I'm going to be working over the next couple of weeks to do that because there is a solution. There is, there is something on the line. And I, and I hope that we would, I will be working on that over the next couple of weeks. I, I would encourage our Recreation Department and others to, to work through that to make sure that this rollout and the way that we do this is successful because it is a reality that we could be losing black and brown kids from playing in the parks, playing in RU sports. And I don't think that that necessarily has to happen, and it doesn't have to be an either or. That's what I'm hearing from the communities.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
I didn't have anything myself. I would, I would agree with what Commissioner Mens said. And I'm trying to listen to some of those pain points as well. But should I?
Just do it?
Should I do? So Commissioner Forney had requested that President Abeni read something. And then President Abeni immediately passed the buck to me. This is a poem written by beloved local poet John Fagerson, directed toward a one Mr. Michael Schroeder. I'm going to word this, I, I'm going to read this word for word. Okay. "Michael is the architect angel of the future of parks. He turns dirt into landscape, parking lots into tot lots, pollution into solution for the health of the city. He understands how land acquisition works, but also the real needs of the young and old. Staff, commissioners, the public bring him their problems, hoping he will find something outside the box. It helps that his mind sizzles with opportunities. Therefore, today, we celebrate his decade of service. It's okay to embarrass him with your appreciation." With gratitude from Mr. John Fagerson and his partner in crime, Meg Forney.
Do you see why I asked Commissioner Thompson to read that? Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Abeni. That was a touching tribute from Mr. Meg. And I do hope you get, I do hope you get a copy of that to frame and hang in your office. I will pass.
Okay. And then I have one final item here, also from Commissioner Forney, who may not go on vacation again and assign us all of these reading assignments here. So I'm serious about that, actually. Okay. So this is also from Meg, but actually, I totally share this sentiment. And I don't even, I haven't seen him, so I hope he's here. But an acknowledgement of Tim Dumas, who emceed the MLK event a couple of weeks ago. And he was great and funny and looked really good in his bow tie. And thank you for sharing your talents with the community, Tim. So, great job, and we hope to have you back again next year. There he is! See? Awesome. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. President Forney signing out. Okay, just kidding!
At 8:19, I called an order. The Recreation Committee, Secretary can you call the role?
Commissioner Alper.
Here.
Commissioner Mens.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Vice Chair Musich.
Present.
Chair Rucker.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I have somebody move the approval of the agenda?
I'll move our agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Can I have somebody move the approval of the minutes?
I can move the minutes for October 1st, 2024.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. So we only have one item. We have a presentation from Assistant Superintendent Mimi Kau. Presentation of the 2024 Recreation Program Lead Initiatives and Collaboration and Work. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Rucker. I would like to start with thanking the five Recreation Program Leads who are still here, hanging in till this presentation. And I'd like to introduce them, if, if it's all right. Peter Jaeger, Dylan Clements, Becky Lewis, John Haldeman, and Maggie Mursell. These folks came out of parks. They had years of experience being recreation supervisors in our parks or in St. Paul parks and other parks, parks in Colorado for one of them. And they love programming. They, you know, are just thrilled to create programs for youth and adults and seniors and intergenerational. And so when these new positions opened, they came, came forward, you know, and went through a, you know, a process and were the five best candidates that we put into action. They started in 2023, and it took, because it's a new position, right? Like, there was a lot of coordination and educating and training, the parks and other, other areas that they support. And so 2024 was a really important and stellar start to, to the work that they've done. And I thought it, it would be neat to, to share that with the board. I will say, they assisted with the compiling of this stuff. And it was, as you will see, it's a lot. It's a lot of, a lot of data. And I will, I will work through it paraphrasing, but they were so excited to tell their story. And I'm excited to, to be the one telling it on their behalf. So I'm happy to send a copy of the PowerPoint out because it'll be a little bit difficult to see some of it. But I am going to paraphrase and get us through it as quickly as, as I can. They are responsible for developing programs amongst a lot of other things that you'll see in the presentation, citywide. So making sure there's equity across the city, offering new programs, trending programs, successful programs, and moving them around to other areas. So we'll start with, this is a map, and every star is our locations where they have served in '24. This is a 2024 report. It includes schools, the Lopet, regional parks, 47 recreation centers, the satellite parks and our, and our lakes. So really cool, almost 70 sites. We're going to start with the neighborhood camps. All of the camp programs that, which a camp would be multiple, a neighborhood camp is multiple times per, per week. We had 44 camps, 1,100 campers. Some of the, the programs that they had, arts, arts and cycling and Water Olympics, farm-to-table, great outdoors. We piloted a kayaking discovery at Lake Nakomas, and there's seven more planned for this summer. So a lot of these things are, are expanding and, and going in more areas. They launched a four-week camp for, for juniors. We noticed that a lot of five- to seven-year-olds were trying to sneak into the citywide camps and fib about their ages. So we saw that need, and it was very successful. We had a theater camp. They collaborate a lot with the naturalist program. So they're a part of the camp experience for the kids. And they do full, full-day programs at Theodore Worth with the naturalists. We also implemented school release camps. So whenever school is out, we try to offer camps at different parks. We had 12 of those, 180 youth. Things that, that were done were STEM robotics, basketball, archery, arts, cooking, and theater. Another neat thing that they implemented was the pop-up camps. We noticed that there are areas of the city and kids that don't have the infrastructure in their lives to register and spend all day, you know, four days a week. So working with Street Reach and the rec centers, they, through a grant, they activated and did 28 camps between four to eight at different parks where there's a lot of kids that just come and congregate. And, and you see the list. It's, it's mostly inner-city and, and low-income areas. So Whittier, North Commons, Franklin Steel, Phelps, Stevens Square, Peavy, Loring, East Phillips, Curry, Elliott. The pop-up camps, there's no, it's free. There's no age restriction. Anyone who comes, which is neat. A lot of brothers and sisters come there. Campers can drop, drop in and stay as long as they are interested. And they, they have, they purposefully do a flexible structure just to keep them engaged and, and, you know, wanting to come back. There were 600 participants in 2024. Some of the things they did is they, they, they learned fishing and where fish came from. They did like camping things, so campfire cooking, things like that, archery, fish casting. They learned to fillet and fry fish. And just many pieces of that overall camping experience, which is really, really cool. So. Another area of, of work that this team does is the, the STEAM program. And that includes the STEM Explorer Series, five science and engineering challenges that occurred at eight to, I'm sorry, for eight to 14-year-olds at 15 parks. Remote Control Chaos. They, we've bought some equipment that will, that have, has brought these, these newer experiences for, for kids that they probably would never experience without some of this programming. Over 400 kids went through the RC cars and drones. 42 of them were so interested, they wanted to get certified to be a drone pilot. So they received that certificate. There was a Drone Commanders class, which is just for intermediate pilots. So kids who already had, probably had the certificate or experience. And it went through skill development, introduction to coding. The Aqua Rocket Explorers is an introduction to rocket science. The kids participate, they, they design, decorate, and fly their own two-liter pop bottle rocket. They love this. And then they're aided with an altimeter, which helps them learn about calculating speed and altitude and G-forces and deducing trends based on fuel and pressure. And I want to just deviate from the presentation to tell you a story about, they were doing this program for homeschool kids at Painter Park. And one of the young boys, he, he had a twin, and he was so into it. He, he took his project to the state fair for 4H, and he won a blue ribbon. The rocket was on display at the State Fair Education Building. His mom wrote the Painter Park director and said, you know, this is so cool. The ripple effect of what you have done. He's so interested in it. He also went on and took it to the Hennepin County Fair. So kind of a neat, you know, impact that this program had with these young people. They also do robotics and innovators and little innovators. They, some of the equipment that we purchased for programming are these small Sphero bolt, bolt robots. They play games and challenges, learn script coding. They play games and challenges, uh, learn script coding. This class is in partnership with Spark Studio, which is really neat. Uh, there was a Youthline Summer Challenge for eleven-to-seventeen-year-olds, so the whole summer, uh, during twenty twenty-four, there were programs that took place at ten rec centers. A hundred and fourteen youth participated in crafts, trivia, field trips, nature experiences and team building. We also began the Soapbox Derby. Um, that was in collaboration with St. Paul Parks and Rec. There were ten teams in our parks. We had woodworking volunteers that were totally engaged in, and into this. They worked with the kids for seven weeks. They designed and built and decorated their soapbox derby car, so each park had their own car. All the kids learned to drive it. Every participant raced at the St. Paul, St. Paul hosted the, the race. Uh, Coil Center won the overall competition and then the other parks that participated, Whittier, Botno, North Commons, they were in the top five. And East Phillips, P V Powderhorn and Lake High also participated. So there might be, you know, six to ten kids that were doing this, go, a part of building it. They had to participate in, in the building and all along the way. And then they were at the competition and each of them rode the car down the hill and then the, there was a whole process to carry it up and the next kid would go. It was, it was really, really cool and it will be hosted in Minneapolis next year, so we will be sure and let the board know so you can come out and see it. It was really neat. Uh, they, this team also worked to host a job fair. Uh, we had five internal job fairs for youth fourteen to twenty-four. Uh, learning about applying for NPRB positions. We collaborated with not only rec, park police, teen teamwork, asset management and had those job fairs, um, last year. Another area that, uh, this team works in is garden, citywide gardening. So some of the things that, that they did last year, house plant classes, uh, it was at several parks. There were eighty partici- participants. They brought their house plant problems and, uh, master gardener talked them through it and also talked to them about, you know, soil and, uh, had a demonstration and, uh, common house, household diseases and pests. Uh, there were food preservation classes at Powderhorn, MLK and Loring. We hosted food preservation classes, again led by a, so there's a lot of collaborations that this team is doing with other outside agencies, you know, to use their expertise. So we're working a lot with the Hennepin County Master Gardeners. They had forty-five participants that learned how to make strawberry jam and take it home. Um, Fairy Gardens, this is a, uh, you know, a big hit with the young kids, so they, they combined arts and gardening and got their hands dirty. There were over two hundred fairy gardens that were made at Lake High, Farview Painter, Bryant Square, Pershing, Lynn Hurst, Wyndham South, Kenny, Whittier, Kenwood Rec Centers. Um, also another neat thing, I remember my mom having a terrarium when we were kids and it was like, especially in the winter, like, how does this live in this, you know, glass case? So, uh, a lot, hundred kids have learned to make terrariums, painting their own mason jars. And tha- that was at, um, the parks listed. I, I won't read them all to you. You can see it pretty good, right? Okay. Um, the Seed Savers Adapt Program and that is in collaboration with the Seed Savers in Decorah, Iowa, a very renowned, um, seed, uh, organization that does a lot of, uh, not only promoting different types of seeds, but, um, they asked us to, to do some, um, research-type work. And so it asks for people to take the seeds and rate them and there were three types of, uh, plants grown side by side and you can see where each park, uh, signed on for a different type of plant and then the public came in and, and was a part of taking these home and a part of the evaluation and, and the information went back to Seed Savers. Um, they've asked us to do, they were so pleased with how we did it, they've asked us to do it again this year. The Little Seed Library was really neat. Uh, we had sixteen hundred packets of seeds donated by the Hennepin County Master Gardeners and we offered them, we had a display at each of these parks listed and members of the community would come in and take the seeds that they wanted to, to, you know, plant and grow. Uh, we also had a garden crew in partnership with MPS and Teen Teamworks. And, uh, AMPAC, uh, we had six teams from South High that maintain and rehab direct gardens. And the parks are listed, the, the students work sixteen hours a week. You know, it was an employment for them. They rebuilt, you know, rec gardens and, you know, you can see some of the other great things they did. They also, you know, maintained watering, planting and weeding and trimming, which I think is a challenge at some of our parks to, to do. So this is a really win-win for not only the parks, but the kids that are involved too. And all the harvest, uh, for farm-to-table was used for the, our farm-to-table camp and also doned, donated to the Joyce Uptown Food Shelf. Outdoor na- nature programming is another big part of the work of this team. Um, there's a lot of fishing. Take a Kid Fishing Day had three hundred and fifty participants at four locations. We partnered with our park police, the sheriff department, CCVP, Bass Tech, uh, the DNR and Twin City Anglers. There were family fishing nights at Powderhorn in Lake Nacomas. We had bilingual pro angler leadership at these. And we had twelve throughout the summer, um, three hundred participants. Dockside Grill and Reel Day at Cedar Lake, um, Central Gym Coaches brought parents, mentors and kids to that. You, there was a lot of Youthline fishing that was offered and taken advantage of by Youthline. Thirty-three trips and two hundred and eighty participants. Uh, we did an ice fishing program at Quarry Lake. We also offered some other ice fishing last year, but it was canceled due to, to weather. Uh, this team is very much involved in the Urban Sap Tap Project that is at, uh, Martin Luther King Junior. Uh, so we had a, a Sap Tap boil after, I'm gonna get to this page because there's some other little tidbits I wanna make sure and say. Um. So, uh, the community comes in and learns how to do the tapping and go home and, and they get the, they purchase, I think for ten dollars, get the equipment. They go home and tap their own maple tree or their tree and bring the sap back. And then there's a fundraising event at MLK that's a pancake breakfast and all of the proceeds. Well, they, they use the, the syrup from everyone's tap and the proceeds go back into the park, uh, for whatever the park needs and also it goes towards the future of the Sap Tap Program. We did a lot of archery last year. We have been certifying staff so that they can go back to their park and, and offer archery. Um, so that, you know, we're not having to find all kinds of different instructors. We have a limited amount of people who know how to do it, so we're expanding and trying to get that, which also allowed us to offer and try some archery leagues. Um, and we had adults and children in, in leagues, uh, thirty participants. We've teamed up with the University of Minnesota Archery Club at Van Cleve Park and they're offering instruction to kids and they also help with the, the Halloween program or the Halloween event at Van Cleve. So lots of collaborations. Kayaking with Paddle Bridge. We had a Learn to Kayak's, uh, series with Youthline. A Sunset Kayak Cruise at Nacomas. A Mom and Daughter Paddle at Nacomas. Latino Youth Development Collaborative, uh, with thirty participants. Four-H programming. We, uh, developed a program agreement with four-H and I know, uh, there's been, uh, Urban Explorers Camp. They had it up at Martin Luther King. And then you may have heard of the Chick Incubation and Embryology Program that we did at Stewart Park where the kids learned all about incubation from start to finish till the chicks were hatched. The kids who were signed up for the program and spent time in it, uh, took the chicks to the Hennepin County Fair and presented them and answered questions and, you know, it was a really cool thing for them. And then the, the, the two staff, um, Sarah from Stewart and Peter, uh, our program lead, uh, they were invited, uh, submitted and were invited to the National Park and Rec Conference and did a session on this incubation, urban incubation program. And, uh, they got raving reviews and are probably gonna be invited back because it was so unique that the, the, I think the superintendent was at it and it was, it was a big crowd. So we also have teamed up with the Lopet a lot. Um, we offered, uh, cross-country skiing last year and, and, you know, the weather didn't cooperate, but now what we've been doing is, is trying to work with them to bring kids out this year to them, you know, because they've got the snowmaking equipment, they have the availability, but we're, we're continuing to, uh, work and groom that relationship and programming. We took advantage of the Minneapolis Sailing School. Uh, we know that there's part of their agreement that they need to provide uh, sailing instruction, uh, to, to youth as part of their agreement at, uh, Bide Makaska. And we have, we offered a cycling and sailing rec center program and a Youthline Sailing Adventure where those Youthline kids went over to Bide Makasta and were, um, taught sailing through the sailing school. Hang on. It's a lot of exciting stuff. I feel bad. We're taking a lot of time, but, um, and another area that this team works in is cycling and seniors and intergenerational programs. We started the Cycling Without Age Program, which is the Two Tri Shaws uh, that I know you, uh, have been told about and aware of. So it's, uh, it's meant for Minneapolis seniors with mobility issues and a companion. And they ride through our Minneapolis parks, so, um, individuals who would never have an opportunity to be able to experience our parks, um, got out of, uh, assisted living centers or were brought, um, to the program by their, um, their spouses or their, their relatives, um, to, to experience a ride. So some of the data with that, we had a spring kickoff with the Tri Shaws at, um, the Croning Center, the Nature Center. So in collaboration with Environmental Ed, we had twenty-two rides and over forty seniors. Many of them came in wheelchairs. It was, it was really phenomenal. The summer program, uh, then we offered it at fourteen sites and had over two hundred rides. And then, um, something new, which I think was really a, a cool idea is we offered it to Minneapolis employees that had, um, someone in their life with a, a mobility issue. And we had eighteen rides for employees and their families and it really went over well for the employees that came. They were really touched. You know, some people brought their, their parents or, um, you know, their, their spouse that maybe had mobility issues, so it was, it was really, we got a lot of good feedback on that. We've hired two experienced bike mechanics who support everything cycling citywide and you'd be amazed how much work that really entails. So when there's a biking camp, they're at the camp at the beginning, you know, fit, fitting helmets, fitting bikes to the kids, making sure the bikes are safe. Um, and, and at any program that we have across our system, they've supported, uh, these mechanics go out and we make sure and it's something completely new that, you know, we never thought of. It's like we got all these bikes out there. You know, we don't know, you know, kids are riding them and who's making sure they're safe and, and, and the same with the helmets. Are, are we making sure that it's the right fit? Um, so that was, uh, I think a really phenomenal, um, opportunity that they brought forward. Uh, there was a Girls Bike Adventure Program, which was for girls to build confidence in their riding skills, practice health and wellbeing and make new friends. And that was, uh, forty-eight participants and we had a lot of parents that volunteered at that. The Perkins Hill Pump Track, um, it's, you know, it's a challenge for, to be able to staff that and, and have programming there. It's in the middle of, of its, its own little community. Um, we do have a storage container there where we have some bikes that we can check out and kinda help, uh, parents and kids and anyone who wants to try to try out the, the pump track. Um, and then we, we tapped into Youthline to say, this is an opportunity, bring your teens um, and, and have them, you know, get to experience the pump track. So we had forty-six Youthline with about twenty hours of wa- ride time. We also had it open like on Tuesdays or certain days and times where we had a mechanic there and a staff there for the community and they would come out. You know, not only are people coming and riding it on their own bikes, but a lot of the people who lived around there were coming out and, and, um, you know, wanting to experience it and looking forward to the next time it was, it was gonna be open. So that was really neat. We had an adult Learn to Ride Program at Falwell, um, which was in partnership with Bike Minnesota. Uh, we had bike rodeos uh, at Painter and Logan. Over three hundred people came to that. That was in partnership with Park Police and Pedal Power. Uh, we have been, uh, working on and, and doing a little bit of intergenerational pop-up programming. It's a drop-in program where all the supplies are, are provided and there's calendar-themed activities that the adult or senior and, um, young person, uh, experience and do. And, uh, it's, it's scheduled to grow a lot more in this year. We partnered with AARP and offered a lot of presentations here at headquarters. Uh, topics included downsizing caregiving awareness and cybercrime and scamming. Um, there were five presentations and over a hundred and forty-eight seniors who came and there's a lot more planned this, this year. Another area that this, uh, team works in is they, they are, they oversee the Walt Deitzig Innovation Grant process. They, they worked all of twenty-three to develop the process, have scoring criteria, you know, treat it like a real grant. Um, and, and so, uh, it, I think it was a lot more user-friendly for, for the staff. It's a recreation grant, so it's taken advantage by a lot of the recreation center staff to do a new innovative program. They're allowed to, um, receive money for three years and then they're expected to sustain it. And each year it, it goes down a little bit, so they get their startup money and then, um, they, they can apply and they have to prove in their application how they're working towards sustainability. There was forty-nine grants and over a hundred and ninety-five thousand. A couple that we pulled out that, uh, the staff was proud of, the Pow- Powderhorn started this puzzle competition that they got uh, Walt Deitzig funding for and it, it expanded. They had, it was so popular, they had to do a, a morning and evening session to accommodate. Um, groups of four work together and compete to do a five-hundred-piece jigsaw puzzle. Um, it, you know, and the first group done gets a prize and it's a huge, uh, uh, hit. There were over two hundred teams. Uh, the, the MLK, uh, syrup, Sap Tap and Breakfast got some funding. And I have a little bit more info on that. Um, so that we've already talked about as far as what that program is, but the funding was for new equipment to expand so that more people could take the tapping equipment home. And we also teamed up with the forestry department and got permission to, uh, tap eight to ten trees in the park, so we were able to teach kids, you know, what that was all about and have them watching it and then it all culminates at this breakfast. Uh, where, you know, we're fundraising and the funding goes back into the program and the park itself. Uh, Fuller Park has had a Pokemon League or started a Pokemon League through this, through this funding. And it engages youth in facilitating, you know, Pokemon League on Friday nights. It's a huge thing. And it started at Wyndham Northeast and the staff went to Fuller. And over a hundred and fifty youth have battled and traded and, um, all of that was supported by a Walt Deitzig grant for, for three years. Uh, the other great thing that, um, this team does is they don't have a big budget. They don't have a lot of staff. Um, they, a lot of them run these programs we've talked about themselves. And, you know, where it's getting so popular, being at seventy different places, you know, we will have to grow into having having a little bit of part-time staff that supports them. But so they, they're innovative. They, they went for grant donations and they tried to team up with other organizations. So just kind of a summary of some of the grants they've received and areas that they've teamed up to get donations. The flower donation, they had flowers available at all of the parks that they used in the beds, but then they had extra and kids could take a, a little flower home and plant it at home. And, and that was a big, and then Moberg's vegetable plants. But almost $40,000 of grants and donations and then volunteer hours. So teaming up with these different organizations who helped with a lot of these programs I've talked to you about, you know, almost 1,500 hours of volunteer time from other partners. And then I just want to ta- tell you about internal and external collaborations and support that this team does. Because they've been in their, in, in recreation for so long, they're really, they're really talented with, you know, not only programming, but pop-up activities. So they've done trainings for Rec Plus, for the part-time and full-time staff about pop-up activities when the kids are all, you know, going cray cray. And, you know, they also provided a handbook for, for the staff to lean on, you know, as they, they went into the future to use the training. The citywide camps had a week-long onboarding for all of their staff. And we teamed up with Environmental Ed who also has camps. And those staff came to it as well. You can see what they went over. Certifications, we, so we do training and certify rec center and Youthline staff in archery and fishing in the hopes of what I mentioned earlier. Those staff go back to their park and the, the thought is you start offering these programs now, you know, so you don't need to depend on a lead coming out and doing it. So that's, that's kind of our long-term plan for that training. Program collaborations and support, the Youthline Trout Ice Fishing Trip, Neighborhood Day Camps, equipment and training. So they all support each other. There's a ton of equipment for these camps that has to be taken to multiple different sites across our system. And, and they're all doing it, you know, scheduling each other and helping each other out for their programs. We connected with AMPEC and got to have four AMPEC staff members that, that helped at the camps and outdoor programs and on the, on the garden crew. And the Latino Youth Development Collaborative is with Paddle Bridge and Environmental Ed. Community outreach, we intentionally reach as many families as possible citywide, hoping to break barriers. So a part of that work was, we had registration nights at five recreation centers for the citywide camps to talk people through how to register, how to do, helping them do scholarship requests. And we had interpreters at those. The pop-up camps, which we've already talked about, has really reached a lot of drop-in inner-city kids. We ensure that programming's happening equitably citywide. We work a lot with Bethune School and our full-service community school coordinator and do family outreach, work with them. The teamwork, it's collaborating with Environmental Ed. They're, like I said, there's limited staff, so they're constantly helping each other. We partner with the rec centers to enhance program offerings and train staff to continue programs at the And that's it. That's all the great stuff. These people are great. Any questions?
Yeah, great presentation. Let's see, flurry of lights coming on now. I believe Commissioner Thompson was first.
Oh, thank you Chair Rucker. I don't really have a question so much as just wanted to thank you for all of that work. I found myself actually quite moved because I was thinking about all the, keep it together, thinking about all the kids that I know who have interacted in these things. And maybe my colleagues don't know this, but I've reached out to Assistant Superintendent Kelb over the years of my, of my service to say, hey, can you, can you, do you need this? Do you need that? Can you help that kid find a job? Where should I put this kid? And, and Assistant Superintendent Kelb has been very responsive every time. And I just think these things are just so life-changing for a lot of kids. And especially the pop-up parks, where you guys thought outside the box, you know, we have all this stuff with registration. And that's clearly kids who know how to do it, but there are a lot of kids who don't have any idea and they just show up at the park. And they don't have someone to navigate that for them as an adult. And, and so I just want to commend you guys on thinking outside the box and just saying, just from my own personal experience, I, I know the impact of the work that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mintz.
Thank you Chair Rucker. It's impressive list of stuff that y'all are doing. That's pretty incredible. So some of that stuff was around before we hired these folks in 2023 though, correct? They're oversee, it's all not all, this is not all new programming?
Chair Rucker, Commissioner Mintz, it, what, what they've done is if there was programs like this, that say there was a fishing program that was successful at maybe two parks, you know, they've taken that program and expanded it to many other parks. So if it, if there's something that seems like it's a repeat, those were the programs that they were challenged with. Okay, now take it citywide. It's only down in Lower South or it's only down, you know, it's only over here in Northeast. We want all the different communities to have an experience like this. So I think that equity is, is what is new with the, the programming that you may have heard before. But, you know, as far as like this, this steam and some of that, you know, that we have our own drones that we're taking to parks. Kids are learning to, to fly drones and we can do it, you know, year-round because we can do it inside. You know, some of those other programs are innovative. Yeah.
That really clarifies because the Wyndham program, I think that you highlighted it, you know, was, was organized by one of the park directors there and then he left. But it was a really successful Pokemon program and it was awesome.
And that's who's doing it at Fuller.
Right.
But he got some startup funding to be able to, to expand it in that community.
Kids are traveling to that. Where can we, where could I find like a list of the 49 grants for the Walt Deitzig Innovation Fund? Is there a place where we can like find?
We can send you, I can send you that.
Yeah, I think that those are really cool.
I don't, I don't think that it's, it's published anywhere. We, you know, but I can send you a list, a spreadsheet.
And are those, are those grants only given to park direct, like a park director has to sponsor another organization? Or can organizations apply for those funds independent of a rec center?
No, they ha- it has to be teamed up with a, a recreation center supervisor or a Youthline, you know, a full-time park staff. And then the, the outside organization could team up with said park. And then they apply on behalf and that organization and the park work together so that it's actually a park program that's benefiting the community around the, the park or, you know, a neighboring community.
How do organizations find out about that process to encourage more, like how, how do, how do the youth, the program leads help other agencies or other groups that might be programming in our parks anyway? How do we let them know about that program or those funds that are available?
There's information on, on our website. It's, it's driven a lot through the parks. So if you know organizations that are interested in doing something, a new program, an innovative program with, with a park or at a park for the community, they can go to that park director and, and pitch their idea. And more times than not, you know, those park directors are excited about anything new they can do, anything where they have a partner that it might be something there, we're not equipped to teach, like the, you know, the Bass Tech Fishing is that Powderhorn and, and they're Latino, it's a Latino organization that, you know, has gotten some funding. And then, you know, they're helping us reach that community of people. So if you have anybody you're, that's interested, you know, send it our way, you know, we'll disperse it.
Right to the park directors.
But if they go through the park director, that's who's applying for the funding. And, and they, they're, they're teamed up with a, a group or there's some of these that are, they're innovative on their own. The, the park staff is asking for the funding and, and if it, if it meets a lot of the criteria, they're, they're receiving the funding. I mean, we're trying to, to utilize the funding to the fullest extent and, and get a lot of neat, new things going that, you know. And then it challenges the park staff to, you know, work to sustain this within three years and do, and it's a part of their programming. And they, and they come with something new, you know, they can always apply. It's twice a year that we have applications and.
Twice a year. So it's not rolling. It's every, it's twice a year.
No, it's two different times.
I mean, it might be something to consider.
Three, three times a year, sorry.
To have, it can be.
These guys are the experts. Yeah.
It can be daunting for community groups to kind of find an individual park that might park, because if you go to one, you have to go to a multiple. It might be nice to have a clearing house so that we know what innovative programs may be options because it might work at multiple parks. But that's one place where I think that, that fund in the spirit of Walt Deitzig and, and what he, what that fund is about could, could be more accessible to outside groups without the gatekeeper-ish, you know, of, of the park director. Because I think that we could find some more, some more options there.
So I will just say, if, if there's organizations that are interested or groups, each of these leads is in a service area. They're connected to the service area. They also serve within the service area. Your service area is Maggie Mersell.
Maggie.
She's at Logan. Peter is at Lower South at Nakomas. Dylan is Southwest. He's at Bryant Square. Becky is Upper South and she's at Phillips Community Center. And John Haldeman is at North Commons. He's for the North Service Area. So to, to, to send that person to one of these leads, if that is easier. And then they will find a park director that is interested in our multiples. And, and yes, they're, they're looking at these grants to see how we can repeat great programs in more areas than just the original place the grant comes from.
I'm gonna put one more plug in. So I work as an envi- I work in the environmental group. I'm loving all of the different varieties of programming. I mean, it's amazing like how much we have with intergenerational work and youth and not just sports. I mean, I think that this is a really exhaustive and impressive list. Really want us to see that connected with schools. Do, do the program, do you all go to schools or to like elderly centers to get program participants?
Absolutely.
Am I talking too much? Okay.
Yes, they do. Like the tri-shaw program and the senior, the, the intergenerational, we're going to senior assisted livings or senior housing that's near the parks. And then as far as the schools, there were several examples in the, where, where they've worked directly with the school to bring kids out to a program. As far as like going to the schools and being in the lunchroom or something like that to get participants, they're more developing the programs and working with the park. Most of these programs are at a park, you know, at a recreation center or a satellite park. So.
I would love to see park staff in the Edison Lunchroom. Last one, Mr. Tate comes here quite a bit. And a program that we've discussed over the years is called Litter League, like a, almost like a competitive trash pickup. Please reach out to him and see what could be possible across the system. I think it's, when you share a bucket and you pick up trash together as intergenerational, it's a wonderful piece. And I would love to see something like that in the parks.
Vice Chair Musick.
Thank you Chair Rucker. I, I thought there was a lot of things in the presentation last year in terms of new programming. I'm just blown away by how much more program opportunity that is being provided to our residents this year. It's amazing to see that this program that we've launched with the core group of you is really expanding in such an exponential way. That's thrilling to see. So thank you all for the hard work you're putting in on making sure that things are fun and exciting and happening everywhere, not just in neighborhoods that have the rec center director to make it happen the first time. It's awesome to see that it's being expanded. That's really fantastic. What I'd love to see in future reporting is how much, because I, I worry we're going to lose sight of some of the long-term impacts of the, the initial work that you're reporting to us today. I'd love if we could see in our future reporting data around the number of programs being adopted at the rec center level and how many locations it's, they're happening at in an ongoing basis. Because I think that's an important metric for us to understand as a board. So we can continue to understand the value that you're providing to the organization, not only at the initial level, but the ongoing impact to expanding the program offerings across the city. And then we had heard from our colleagues at the school board during our joint meeting that they would love to partner with us on job fairs. And I saw that we have done five of them in the past year. I'm just curious to know if we'll be collaborating with our school board counterparts on including them in job fair opportunities this year for you.
We are. As a matter of fact, we're doing a job fair with them at North High.
At North High in March.
In March. So, yeah, as part of those goals.
It's like you knew we were gonna ask that question tonight. Fabulous. Well, thank you for all the information. I appreciate it. And I, I look forward to seeing just how much more of an impact this is gonna have next year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert.
Thank you. I just, I just want to say ditto to what everybody else said. Blown away, totally blown away. And I just wanted to, just point out that my daughter, my, she was seven at the time, attended the girls' bike club. And they decorated bicycles and it was, and she got a shirt. It was part of the, so she was part of the club that another, another girl designed and then had screen, screen printed or however it was done as part of it, printed. And they, she had really not biked before this. She's now eight. And so because of going with peers and like she gained the confidence to do that. So it was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. That's great.
Superintendent Bangor.
Thank you Commissioner Rucker and thank you for recognizing me in this. Just real quickly, I, I was like going through this and trying to think of what to say here, but I want to recognize these incredible people. And, and Mimi knows this is so funny because I, you know, when I, when Mimi took this role on here and I, I was eyeballing her across the way for a while, you know, and I said, this is me the person to take this role and, and move it. And she has. And, and, and I'm jealous because she came up with this idea. We were sitting in a room one day and we're kind of going through recreation, trying to figure these things out. And Mimi came up and she goes, I have an idea. And, and this is where it all kind of stemmed from. And, and so I want to make sure to give you credit for, and I'd love to take credit for it, but, but Mimi has just been really innovative and really thoughtful. And this is the $2.6 million at work, right? We fought very hard for this. I mean, we know that we had to close the gap, Jennifer, and we, when I first got here and the mandate when I got this job, but you elected me too. And I know Commissioner Musick and Commissioner Forni around recreation and how to change and transform it. And we fought for three years to get the $2.6 million in perpetuity for our young people, the level we pulled for our kids. And it, it's just been amazing. And these, these folks that sit here are part of that example. And we've been building it and building it. And, and this is just one small example, not small, very large example, of how we continue to expand and grow recreation in a way that we know it can be different and, and incredible and innovative and thoughtful and meeting kids where they're at, right? And so this is just one example. Spark Studios, right? Team, Team Works, right? JD Rivers and these kids have worked. We can go on and on of the investment that this board has promised and has done and how it's reflecting the work around the youth. So I wanted to say that and just my gratitude to these guys. They've been just incredible. They've taken what we do in rec centers. And when me and I were talking about this and we said, how do we keep growing this and expand it and be different, right? We knew we were building the studios, which is really an amazing thing to see. We're gonna have six studios here by next year. But on top of it, it was how do we change recreation to meet the needs for our young people where they are currently? And to think outside the box, as people say, but to think about some really, really cool things. And these guys have just, I mean, stepped up and has done something so amazing. And, and I just can't thank these guys enough. I mean, you guys are amazing. And thank you for your work. I remember I was at Peter's NRPA with the, the chickens and the, and the, it was, it was unbelievable to sit in that room and watch people fascinated by this presentation. I was blown away by it and what they're doing at Stewart. And if he could give a presentation just on that alone, it's amazing. And the tri-shaws, you know, I went to Mimi and said, we gotta get some tri-shaws. And the Tri-Shaws, you know, I went to Mimi and said, we gotta get some Tri-Shaws in here and get our old adults in those, those Tri-Shaws and, and have them and get them out of their space. I've talked about it before to you what that means. And every one of them has done some incredible things around STEAM and, and it's just been really amazing. But, you know, Mimi is just really taking this around with it and, and I'm grateful for her. And, you know, when we talked about close the gap, when we talked way back in the day with Jennifer and I, we talked about that $3 million gap that we saw within youth and how we're gonna change it. The last thing I'll say is that a lot of trans people come and I'm glad of this presentation. They come here to this boardroom and I hear comments constantly in my emails and folks always say the question, you know, what are we doing for our youth, right? And you hear all this time about the Park and Recreation Board. I hope that you all take this and you look back and you say to folks, here's what we're doing. And support and, and talk about this to our community, because they don't know. Sometimes they don't know, the people that are experiencing are, are doing it and they get it and they feel it and they're part of it. When we talk about our, our programming and our youth and our activities and our sports and all the things that we do, continue to share that with our community because I think sometimes not aware. So I just wanted to thank you for giving me the time, want to say thank you to these guys. You're senior, her, you guys are amazing, you're doing great work. And Mimi, thank you for bringing this forward in our, in our conversations and thinking outside of, and I, I tasked her with that, I said, what can we do? And she said, what if we do this? And here we are. And so thank you very much and I just wanted to say thank you for that and, and thank you to this board for your support.
Thank you Superintendent. I just wanna say, it's one thing to have the idea, right? And, and it was, I, I feel a great idea, but, but without the people who have the passion and excitement, and this group is so excited and, and when we meet, you know, we meet, you know, every two or three weeks. And Director Nicole Hernandez is a part of this as well. She is not feeling well today, so she couldn't be here tonight. But they are so excited and then they're telling, like I'm doing this and I'm doing, and this is just a snapshot. I mean, the depth of the things that are being done and the relationships that are being built is just amazing and I'm, I'm very proud of, of this team and, and all that they're doing. And that's why, you know, I'm glad they stuck it out tonight, because it was, you know, I didn't expect it to come on so late, but I'm just glad that we could have the opportunity to, to let you know about it, because it is a, it, it's a two-year-old concept that has come to fruition and there's a lot of great things going on.
All right, well, I have a question. Is it possible we can kind of up the, you know, the program in the wintertime? Because I was just, two, three weeks ago, pal, Sheriff's Department, Police Department, Fire Department, we put on a, and DNR, we put on an ice fishing excursion for the kids, actually at Theodore Wolf Lake.
We're there.
Yeah.
I was there.
Yep.
So we were a part of it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we were a part of it.
We wanted to do more.
Yeah, exactly.
More of that.
Exactly. So we can do that more, that would be great, because we were at Nakamas as well, right?
Uh, yeah, we were at Nakamas and Wolf.
Yep. So yeah, we can continue to do that, it was great, because the kids, you know, they really loved it. Some of them have never done it before.
Right.
I'd never done it before and I didn't know how warm the, the, you know, the ice fishing, yeah, ice houses are. So yeah, we could continue to do stuff like that, that would be great.
And I, I would just like to let all of you know, with, with the Weber ice rink not being put in this year, I challenge this team that we have that building, you know, with the beautiful fireplace, that it's the pool building. And they have implemented programming this year, all the gardening that was listed, that's gonna be offered there for, you know, adults and families. And then there's intergenerational, they're doing some winter cycling and you doing fishing too?
Robotics.
Robotics. And so they're taking what you've heard and now we're offering it in, in that facility as well. So I think, I think that is the vision of, of this team is where else can we expand to? How can we get, reach more kids to, to get to do this?
All right.
Any ideas? Bring them forward and any community groups, please bring them forward, we'd love to work with them.
All right, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
With that being said, at 9:14, adjourn the rec committee.
I will now call to order the Standards and Conduct Committee. Secretary Ringold, can you please take the roll?
President Forni, absent. Vice President Musich.
Present.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Vice Chair Alper.
Here.
Chair Schaefer.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Can someone move the approval of our agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And let's move the approval of the minutes.
I'll move the minutes for the Standards and Conduct Committee from January 17th, 2024.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have one action item this evening, can someone please move that?
I'll move Resolution 2025-16. This is a resolution amending the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, Rules of the Board, Section 15.
Great, I think most of us read through that, just moving the superintendent to the top of the agenda. All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. With that, I will adjourn the Standards and Conduct Committee.
That's incredible. Okay, now nine, one minute later, at 9:15, I would like to call the Administration and Finance Committee to order is the last committee of the night. Secretary Ringold, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Alper.
Here.
Commissioner Forni, absent. Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Vice Chair Schaefer.
Here.
Chair Thompson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would someone like to move our agenda for us?
I'll move.
Thank you Commissioner Rucker. All those in favor of the agenda stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda, would someone like to move the minutes for us?
I will move the minutes of the Admin and Finance Committee of January 7th, 2025.
Thank you. All those in favor of adding those to the record, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got some minutes. All right, we've got two things. Anyone who would love to read them, go right ahead.
I'll move Resolution 2025-13. Resolution approving a lease agreement with Sun Debt LLC, leasing commercial space at 1828 Marshall Street Northeast, unit number 81019, located within the Above the Falls Regional Park for a term of one year.
Does anyone have any questions on this or would like to see any information about it? Seeing no lights, I say let's take it to a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-13, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, that motion carries. Last thing, my friends, someone like to move it for us? Anyone?
I will move Resolution 2025-28. Resolution approving Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement. COM 0007362 with West Eight Urban Design and Landscape Architecture PC for Bridge and Landscape Architectural, Architectural Design Services at 26th Avenue North Overlook, located in the Above the Falls Regional Park in the amount of $42,729 resulting in a new contract total of $292,729 in the addition of $47,000 for additional community engagement and permit regulation planning. And amending the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan to reallocate $89,729 from the North Mississippi Regional Park for plan implementation to the Above the Falls Regional Park for plan implementation.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? I know that I do, I'm just gonna say it. So seeing no lights, I will get to my question. This is challenging to me because this is taking money out of North Mississippi, of which I have had many conversations over the last couple of years regarding its use toward North Mississippi slash Weber. For those of you who don't know, Weber, Weber as we once knew it is basically half a neighborhood park and half part of North Mississippi. So can I, can, can you explain to me, and I don't want to make this meeting any longer than it needs to be, what, what the impact will be for the North Mississippi Park by reallocating these funds?
Commissioner Thompson, Chair, I completely forget.
It's okay, I'm the chair.
Chair Thompson, thank you for the question. Tyler and I, Tyler and I are kind of tag teaming this because I have the connection to the CIP. So staff is proposing to close this gap out of the North Mississippi dollars, largely because we have an allocation of North Mississippi money in '25 and '26 that's fairly significant. It's about $2.3 million that will be used for implementation of the park plan that's currently underway. It's doubtful we will be able to spend that money in 2025, because we won't have a plan by then. So I think in future CIPs, there's an opportunity to replace this money if the board should want to and, and not take from North Mississippi. So similar to an action that was recently before you, a couple of weeks ago, this is funding that we actually need right now to pay for work that's happening immediately and the North Mississippi is gonna come a little bit later and so that's why, why we're dipping into that fund. My expectation is certainly this does not touch the dollars that are allocated to complete that current planning process, so there will be no effect in that sense. Any effect would be, would be felt with the future implementation dollars, but again, we, we do have future CIPs to replace that prior to ever getting under construction with new work at North Mississippi.
Thank you for that, Director Robertson, that makes a lot of sense. Does anyone else have anything? I will, I will confess that I find the, the bridge project potentially challenging in the future, but I'm not gonna get in and sway right in this exact moment. So seeing no lights, all those in favor of Resolution 2025-28, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and I will declare this meeting adjourned.